Okay, it is seven o'clock. So I'm going to call the meeting to order and this is the regular city council meeting for Minnetrista on May 7th. First order of business is I'd like to ask that you all join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome. I'm sure we have a lot of people signed up. If you're signed up under or want to speak in regards to the ordinance, we're going to reflect, deflect that to that item when it comes up on the agenda. So just so you know, you will have an opportunity at that time. So first, I'd like to start with introductions. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor, and to my left are council members Pam Mortenson, Mike Molitor, Shannon Bruce, and our brand-new council member, John Chumperlin. On the end is our city engineer, Paul Hornby with WSB. Then we have our city clerk, Chris Lindquist, our public works superintendent, Gary Peters. Also in the audience, we have Cassandra Tabor, our director of administration. And then to my right, I have our city administrator, Mike Veroni, finance director, Brian Grimm, community development director, David Abel. And then next to David is our attorney, Ron Beatty with Kennedy and Graven. And going back to his seat is our chief of police, Paul Falls. So again, welcome, everyone. Just a reminder, if you have electronic devices, please put them on airplane mode or quiet so that they don't disrupt or interrupt our proceedings here. So with that, sir, are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Okay? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. A motion has been made by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Ms. Mortenson to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So next, we have a very special evening tonight. We have a special presentation and recognition of council member, past council member, Patricia Thole. So I'd like to read the recognition. Should I go up there?
Sure.
And Ms. Thole, if you would like to join me at podium here.
So Patricia served as a valuable member of the Minister's Society Commission in 2014. And Patricia was elected in 2014 to serve on the city council from January of 2015 through 2018 until she resigned her council seat on March 19, 2018. Has she moved? And whereas Patricia was appointed as the active mayor in place of the mayor's absence, do you get her company? Yeah. In 2015, 2016, and 2017. And whereas Patricia was appointed to be a member of the personnel committee in 2015, 2016, 2017, and 2018 until she resigned from the council. And whereas, for all her tenure on the Minister's City Council, Patricia has been named and admitted to the public process by working with staff, local organizations, and community leaders to achieve the highest level of public trust and involvement in all aspects of our community and life. Whereas Patricia is held in time regard by the entire city staff, elected officials, and the Minister's Committee. Therefore, it may be solved by the City Council of the City of Minnetrista that we thank Patricia Thole for her service. For the strong partnerships she has helped to foster between Minister's City Government and citizens, and for her outstanding consideration of city road re-improvements and water tower water and utility infrastructure improvements to our city. Do I have a motion by the City Council to make this recognition and contribution of her participation and contributions to our city?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson and seconded by Ms. Molitor. Any further discussion? I would just like to say, thank you very much. I'm going to try not to tear up because throughout the process and throughout getting to know you over these past three or four years, it's been a pleasure and an honor, great honor and great thanks. And I'm going to give you this. This is for you to, and then also this is a flag that we'd like to present to you, a recognition and appreciation for your dedication, a service to the Minister's Society Commission in 2014, and for your outstanding contribution to the partnership of the Minister's City Council. And if you'd like to say anything?
Just very brief, and it was an honor to serve on behalf of the residents and real pleasure to serve with the council members they served with and the city staff. They're just A-plus people, so it's been a joy. Thank you. I wish you the best in your future and the city of Minnetrista.
Thank you. And we, so we had a motion on the floor and seconded. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So we have a new public works maintenance employee, Jack Strauss.
Madam Mayor, council. Jack comes to us, started March of this year, 26th. He came with a background of construction and electrical line work. He's got a combined five years of experience. Since he started, he's fit in very well with the crew. He's had trial by fire for snowplowing this year. He got thrown into the big trucks during the blizzard, and he did great. I mean, it was a real learning experience for him, so but he came through. He gets along great with the crew, gets kudos from me for what he can do. He can operate equipment, and all around, he's a good guy and a good hard worker.
Mr. Strauss, would you care to stand? Is there anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, so I'd like to start off by, my name's Jack Strauss. I worked as a lineman for O.K. Construction for about the past four years. Doing that job, I was able to travel all around the Midwest. And I was looking for something that allows me to be home every night. So luckily, I got on with the city of Minnetrista and their public works department, and I really appreciate the opportunity and look forward to the future here.
Thank you, and we're glad you're here.
Thanks, guys.
So, welcome. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming.
Yep.
And you probably won't be home every night. All right. So we'll move on to our next special presentation, and that's our 2018 first quarter financial update. Mr. Grimm?
All right. Madam Mayor and council, and I'll keep this brief because I know everyone here is not here to listen to me. So we'll go on. So this is on, it's our regular quarterly financial update. It's on pages four through 12 of the packet. Basically, page six is the revenue guideline. You can see the first quarter, we basically, we don't really get a lot of our revenue in just because of the timing of the year. The building permit activity really hasn't picked up yet. We don't get our taxes until June, July for our first half settlement. So that's, it's in single digits, and it is every year as far as at this point. Our expenditures on the next several pages, I think we're at about 24 percent of our expended budget, which is about where you'd expect to be at the end of the first quarter in comparison, you know, to the previous years as well. We're usually in that 23, 24, 25 percent. Why is our cash balance for your review is attached on page 12? Nothing really to point out there. I think everything's tracking, tracking well for this part of the year. We will have our 2017 audit presentation at the next council meeting, so that'll be, you know, a much, you know, longer report than I'm doing right now as far as presented by our auditors that will go over all the highlights of 2017. But I think, the one other thing I think I did mention in the memo too is as far as the building activity since the end of March has really picked up. So once you, once you see the second quarter report, you'll see, I think, you know, David could attest to that, that building inspections is super busy. So you'll see that revenue, you know, hopefully skyrocket or go up significantly for the second quarter. So otherwise, I'll just stand for any questions as far as the documents that were in the packet as far as on the financials.
Does anybody have any questions? All right. None. You do such a great job.
Thanks, yeah.
You and staff, so, great. Thank you. So next, we'll move on to persons to be heard. Everybody that's on this list indicated they're here for the short-term rental, so like I said earlier, we'll move that on to that agenda item, and you'll have an opportunity at that time to speak. So next, we'll do our consent agenda items. They consist of approve our work session meeting minutes from April 16th, approve our regular meeting minutes from April 16th, 2018, and it's a resolution to approve our claims. D is a resolution to amend our 2018 appointment and designations. E is a resolution to approve our step increase for Trevor Barrett, public works maintenance worker. F is a resolution to contract for fence installation at Douglas Park. And G is approve our professional services agreement for 2018 seal code improvements. And H is a resolution to approve professional services contract for the Lotus Drive improvements. Are there any ones you wish to remove?
I'd like to remove item F, the fence installation at Douglas Park.
Okay. Otherwise, I'd.
I'd like to remove item G.
All right. So F and G, that remains A, B, C, D, E, and H. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items as presented, less than F and G?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson and seconded by Ms. Bruce to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, and H. Any further questions? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So number F.
The, most of the cities that I've, parks that I've been at, they use galvanized steel chain link fences. And the non-vinyl coated fences serve the same purpose adequately, and they cost $1,000 more. And I know it's a small amount, but it's more money, and I think it serves the same purpose. And I think these things add up, and I don't see that there's any quality or maintenance issues here going on with the fence choice, so I prefer the galvanized steel.
I believe the fence, the other one looks nicer, of course. Gary, do you want to weigh in on this?
When we discussed this with Nick Olson there, we were talking about it, and we went with a black coated fence because we, an issue arose a while back where we had put a fence up in the city of, galvanized fence, and it was not aesthetically pleasing to some of the homeowners. And I believe it was redone at a gift from one of the homeowners in the area to redo the fence with a black coated galvanite, or a black vinyl coated fence because they didn't want to look at it. Being that this is in the heart of the park out there, is in the kind of mixed neighborhood with traffic on one side but homes on the other, we just thought for, you know, the fact that it'd be kind of more pleasing to the eye to have the black over the galvanized. It's a galvanized one now. We just, you know, we thought the black would look better, more aesthetically pleasing, stuff like that, so.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that's been brought up too by residents in that area over the years.
Right.
So that was the reason. We went through the scenario that Mr. Peters is talking about. It had been brought up before, so that was the only reason. It's certainly a decision council.
And it was part of the CIP for the park, park plan?
For, for 2017, and we put it on hold because the roadway was going to be done there, plus they made some improvements to the park area.
Right.
They installed curb and stuff, so wasn't, didn't, you know, make sense at that time to put the fence in and have all the work done. Now that everything's done, we can come in and get the fence done and get it established, so.
So this is a replacement for a fence that was already there?
That's already there, that the one corner is buried about seven inches deep because somewhere down the line, they added fill-in and actually filled it up. We found a culvert that was filled in that nobody knew was there. There's, there were, used to be several large cottonwood trees in this park. Some of the branch had broken off and fell on top, dented the top railing all over. The gate, you know, has, the one is, the gate has been stolen on one side, the other side is demolished, so, you know, we've removed them now and stuff, so it's, it's in desperate need of replacement. We, we did have a couple options in there to eliminate half the fence scenario, but with the park being surrounded by roads on all side, we kind of put that idea aside just because it gave a little more protection, especially with the kids in there on the tuxedo roadside, but also on the other side where the basketball court is, so the kids aren't running out to chase a ball out in the road and stuff like that.
Sure, yeah, I'm not questioning the need for the fence. I'm just, it's replacing a fence that was already there, and I'm just questioning if anybody's going to notice if we replace it with a more expensive fence than was there before when they've been fine with the fences.
No, no, the fence before was, was the black coated vinyl?
No.
No, it's, it's a regular galvanized now.
Oh, okay. But they had requested the black vinyl?
It's been brought up in the past, yes.
Decorative.
Decorative fence.
Whatever that means.
Yeah. So this would be the least expensive in terms of decorative?
Correct.
Okay. And the cost difference is, is $1,000, and it, there was nine, $9,500 was in the CIP in terms of budgeted amount. And the park commission approved this or?
Correct.
Wanted to see this? Okay. Okay. And this comes from park dedication funds? Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Is there any difference in the length of how long it lasts?
No, they've come, they don't recommend green anymore because it doesn't fare well with the sun, but now with the UV protection here, the black lasts just as long. So it's, they said there's just, it's, you know, between the two, it's just, you know, there's no real length difference in it, so.
Okay. Rest of the council, what would you like to do?
I already said what I wanted to.
Yeah, I know. I said the rest of the council.
I just know that area that there are houses all the way around.
Right.
Like, right next to it. And so, you know, if it were farther back, you know, it probably wouldn't be such an issue, but these, it's looking right in the front yards of some people. I mean, literally, like, from here to the wall away. So I, you know, I can see having the request for a black vinyl makes some sense. It's not an outrageous price difference, in my opinion, so I guess I'd support the black.
Okay. Okay.
I have seen the park as well, and I do agree with you, Mike, how it is surrounded, so.
Yeah, it's, it's a triangle park, and it's literally all three sides.
Right.
I have not seen it, but I'll agree.
Okay. All right. So is there a motion then to approve the contract for the fence installation at Douglas Park?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Chumperlin made that second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
4-1, Ms. Bruce dissenting. And then we had number G. Mr. Molitor?
Yes, on the seal coating, and I realize that this is for the oversight services, for lack of a better term, but I did want to bring up Paul on, on that, I noticed that we are including the seal coating for the trail between Jennings and Bayside.
Correct.
That trail's in, as you, as you well know, is in really rough shape. Is that even a candidate for that, or should we be looking at that as mill and overlay or something along those lines?
Well, I think if, if you're going to want to remove the pavement, you wouldn't really mill and overlay that. I mean, you'd tear it out.
Right. Well, I meant something other than seal coating.
You know, looking at, there's a couple of bad, you know, transverse cracks in it, and loss of finds in the top where the aggregate is showing. So when we looked at it from a pavement management standpoint, felt that the smaller rock that we use in the streets for seal coating would cover that nicely. And then look at fog sealing over the top, so you get that black look back to it. And then from a public work standpoint, they would patch the couple of bad cracks that are in it.
Okay, so you would, you would actually do the cheap seal and then a fog seal on top?
Yeah, that's what we're running in the seal coat this year. We are running an alternate to fog seal the seal coat after the second sweeping.
Okay, because obviously, there's no vehicle traffic to pad the rock into the, we've got to do something.
Correct. So when you do go through seal coating, what, actually, you like to keep it under traffic for a period of time, but once that tack cures, the rock that's touching it should, should stick.
Right.
And so that's the premise behind it. And the fog seal oversees all that, which helps keep moisture out. So that, and Mindat's been promoting that for the last several, several years, and so has pavement management specialists, not just at my company but in others, so. So it is something that we'd like to try depending on the price, but that's something you can decide when bids come in.
Okay.
And right now, as you may recall from past years, this is a cooperative project between Minnetrista, Victoria, and Shorewood. Shorewood is the lead agency that bids the project. And so we try, we do that with a number of cities. Sometimes Excelsior's in, sometimes not, but try to bring the cost of the projects down. So we thought we'd try adding an alternative for fog sealing the roads and the trail.
Okay. And then I noticed the trail from, just across the street from that effectively, from Bayside to Minneapolis is not included, and we, are we, what do we have in plan for that? Obviously, it's not put over a road plan, but do we want to do that when we address Minneapolis Avenue, or, because I think we're, this includes seal coating for Bayside if I remember correctly.
The, yeah, Bayside is on the list, yeah.
Correct.
So it's, it, you know, it's adjacent to Bayside, just like the other one. I mean, it's, it's 30 feet, maybe?
Yeah, if council would like us to add that in, that's a short segment.
Yeah. It can be more than that.
Yeah, that makes sense. That's a good idea.
We could do that. I've heard complaints about that, so if we could get that added, that'd be great.
That wouldn't have any bearing on the contract, but.
No, I, again, I saw.
Yeah, good point. Yep.
What's the start date on this, Paul?
Well, it's actually, it's advertised, Shorewood has advertised, so what we do is we, the project start date is contingent upon the various cities getting their patchy patchwork done on the seal coat road. So everyone prioritizes the patchwork to be done on that, so you could, I think typically, we've had the seal coat occur in August. And if it's, if it's a wet year, probably September. I think there was one year we did it in eight September.
Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, is there a motion to authorize the preparation of plan specifications and bidding construction and professional services for the 2018 crack fill and seal coat improvements?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion has been made by Mr. Molitor and seconded by Ms. Mortenson. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So now we'll move on to our public hearings. We have two this evening. It's renewal of the liquor licenses for Burl Oaks Golf Club and West Tonka Recreation Association. Ms. Lindquist.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Burl Oaks and WRA have both applied to renew their liquor licenses for the 2018-2019 licensing period. The liquor licenses are good from June 1st of 2018 to May 31st, 2019. Both have submitted completed applications and have passed their background checks. There, I also did their tax and liquor taxes, and everything is where it needs to be for that. Notices were sent to the property owners within 500 feet, and to date, I had not received any public comments. Burl Oaks currently is licensed to sell intoxicating liquor, wine, and beer, and it has a permit to sell also on Sundays. WRA currently is licensed to sell 3-2 beer with incidentals of pop candy and baked snacks. Both are currently seeking to continue using the same operations in the past years. Staff recommends approving the, both renewals for both WRA and Burl Oaks with the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Otherwise, this is a public hearing for these two items, so I will open the public hearing for the liquor licenses renewal for Burl Oaks Golf Club and West Tonka Recreation Association. If there's anybody here that wishes to speak for or against, you may do so at this time. You would have to come up to the podium and state your name and address. So nobody is here for that? Surprise. Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing for the liquor license renewals and take it back to council. I need a motion to approve, do you want them separately, or?
You can do them both at the same time.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve the renewal of the liquor licenses for Burl Oaks Golf Club and West Tonka Recreation Association with conditions as attached in our, as staff is recommending.
So moved.
Okay. A motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Ms. Bruce made that motion, and Ms. Mortenson seconded. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, I said aye too. Motion passes 5-0, so. So next, we're here, going to move on to the next business item. This, this business item is not a public hearing. This is a open meeting. So what, the way we're going to do this is we're going to have staff give a presentation, and then if council has any questions of staff, they can do so. I will open it up for public comment. I'm going to ask that you come to the podium. You have to state your name and address, and you have to keep your remarks to three minutes or less. Please be concise and direct. Please be respectful of everybody in this room, and you will have one opportunity to speak. We do have a lot of information in our packet. We've read the emails, so we have emails, we have letters. We've also reviewed and had in our packet as well the planning commission meeting minutes. So we have a lot of information that we've already gathered. If somebody comes up to the podium and basically says the same thing, and you would like to reiterate that, if you could, for our timing purposes, if you could just say, I agree with what so-and-so said, versus having this repeated numerous times, because I'm sure on such a lovely evening, all of you would like to get home at a, at a decent hour. So with that, Mr. Abel.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and council. So this is ordinance number 453 regarding short-term rentals, also known as VDROs, vacation rental by owners. As we know, they involve lodging of guests in traditional single-family neighborhoods. Typically, they're done in, in single-family homes. As the council may recall, early in 2017, you guys did discuss this topic, and at that time, there was no action or direction given to do anything regarding an ordinance. The topic was then discussed again at your February 2018 meeting, and the council did direct staff to work on a draft ordinance that would prohibit short-term rentals within the city of Minnetrista. Ordinance 453, which is in your packet, was drafted and presented to the planning commission at their March 2018 meeting. They did open a public hearing and take public comment. Given the amount of information, they continued that public hearing into their April meeting where they did take more comment, written comment, public comment at that meeting. They did close that public hearing and, and made a recommendation. As stated, ordinance 453 would add language that would clarify that the use of residential property for the commercial purpose of short-term rentals is not currently and would not be allowed within the city of Minnetrista. The recommendation from the planning commission was that the city council adopt the ordinance as written. That motion was a, was passed with a four to three vote. The commission did go on to discuss that if the council were to adopt the ordinance as written, there was a lot of talk and concern about when the ordinance might take effect, and they talked about having some sort of sunset period because much of the short-term rentals in the city are already booked for the 2018 summer season. So that was something that was discussed and brought up, not necessarily included in their motion, but something that seemed to be favorable to the, the planning commission if the council were to adopt the ordinance as written. As you mentioned, Mayor, the minutes from the planning commission meeting are in your packet along with all the written comments. There was an email submitted late this afternoon that I also printed and put it on, on each of your, your chairs this evening. So certainly have all the emails and written comment before you along with the ordinance that's, that's being proposed. So with that, looking for council to take, take action on ordinance number 453.
Thank you. Are there any questions? We'll have, obviously, time later, but we can also ask questions. So, Ms. Bruce?
Um, it would be appropriate, are we?
We will have time afterwards, definitely.
Okay. I'll save my remarks until we hear from everyone.
Yeah. Okay. So I'll start with this list. If you didn't sign up, you can still have an opportunity to speak. Scott Owens is the first one on the list.
I guess I'm not. So Scott Owens, 535, let's see if I wrote. My wife and I have done short-term rental for quite some time. We've been landlords for 20 years. And we've done short-term rental for about eight years. We've rented to everybody. We've rented to Section 8, we've rented to people on lakes. And then we started doing the short-term, which we find suits our needs much better. We've rented to thousands of short-term renters over that period of time. Thousands. And I can tell you, when I hear about problems that apparently came up at the last meeting, which I wasn't able to get to, it just hurts the heck out of me. Because these are non-professional people, they're amateurs. They're doing short-term rentals, they're not lying, they're professionals. I don't know if I call myself a professional, but my wife and I are experienced. And it's sort of like, I feel almost as if you're throwing the baby out with the bathwater. I mean, I've been through four cities on this now, everything from Minneapolis to, you know, the Mount Union last week. And no, what you're really talking about is neighbor behavior. Now, when somebody loses a job for a year, the neighbors can exert a little bit more pressure. When somebody's there for a week, it's a lot less. And a great comment from Mount Union was, and we had this on the bite. And I agree 100%, and I'm talking about bite on both sides. As a host, I would love it if I could go to the police and say, "I've got a guest that is just a big one, and I don't want that guest to be here. Can you come and enforce my decision to affect these people?" Now, that's bite on these people who come for weed and give trouble and are not respectful of the neighbors. Now, my wife and I, we greet in person every single group that comes into a home in Minnesota. And if there's a complaint, the neighbors have the number. They can get hold of us one way or the other. And we come out and I personally get up, doesn't matter if it's two a.m., I get up and I go to that property. And I find out what the heck is going on. And I can rely on her, she said, he said, whatever. And I've told people, "You can leave right now." And there, sometimes that's easy, sometimes that's not. But if we had a little bit of backing, I mean, I know it's in your ordinance, I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to read it, but gee, if you don't have some provision in there, please do something. I can see why you say, "Let's, let's get rid of short-term." Because, well, it's like having a bark and dog. Because you've got a bark and dog, you get rid of all the dogs and dogs. It's the same kind of thing. You're talking about behavior. You're not talking about whether or not somebody has to be short-term. And by the way, who's short-term? You can't prohibit one.
Mr. Owens, sorry. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Sorry, I don't sound fast, but thank you very much for the opportunity to do this.
All right. Next on the list, we have Patty Kivestu. I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing your names wrong.
It's a perfect. Nice to be here. My name is Patty Kivestu. I'm at 5720 Hembridge Drive in Dwyer, Minnesota. And I'm here because I think I'm a pretty typical vacation rental by owner renter. An Airbnb renter, a HomeAway renter. My husband and I and my children have rented places in Talan, Estonia, in Toronto, Ontario, in Chad, Massachusetts. We have always been thoroughly vetted. I always find when I talk to people, they want to know who I am, what I'm going to be spending my time doing there. It's, it's really convivial and it works so well. I don't think I'm a very scary person. And I think that I'm very typical of the type of people who do this. It's, it's nice as a family to stay in a private home as opposed to being spread out in a hotel or a motel. And it's happening everywhere. So all I wanted to say is I feel like I'm represented and I, I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Eric Hermanson.
Eric Hermanson, five-three-five-five Cedar Point Road. I'm one of the owners of, of this place. I own it with another buddy and his wife.
So you own Cedar Point Road, thirty fifty-three fifty-five, okay. And I'm sorry, but we're going to need your address for the record.
Four-three-three-five France Avenue South, Minneapolis. So he, he has three kids, I have two kids and another one on the way. We bought it as a cabin that we could rent and also supplement the income with, with some short-term rentals as well. To date, we've had six or seven people who've, or groups that have stayed there. We just finished kind of fixing up and lip-sticking it in August. So it's, it's a, a nice opportunity for people who can come out and enjoy the lake. And that's one of the cool things about Minatrista is the lake and being able to experience it. You know, we've had people on there for fifty wedding anniversaries or weddings or funeral. You know, we, we try very hard not to, we put a lot of money into the house. We don't want it to get trashed. We're not trying to have bachelor parties or weddings or anything like that. But, you know, I think it's something that you guys have ordinances for, for noise ordinance. You guys have urban ordinances and it's a deal with that. And I think that's something that you guys should continue to do is, is, is set that in place. But outlaw short-term rentals for, because of a fear of an ordinance that can be broken, which you guys already have ordinance in places to, you know, take care of that is kind of reiterate, kind of throwing the baby out with the bathwater. So I just appreciate the consideration for that and thank you.
Thank you. Next, Sandy Rude.
My name is Sandy Rude and my address is 4220 Tilden Lane East. I was just thinking, on the way over here, how blessed I am that I live in America where I still have a voice. I am a private homeowner who rented out our home a few times last year to help with rising costs of taxes, insurance, and general upkeep. I can accommodate six people. And obviously, since this is my own home, I do not want to be gone long. I, I rented, last year I rented it out a few times. When my husband and I bought our home here, it was in total disrepair. In fact, we did not even move in for two years because we wanted to bring it up to the caliber of the lovely neighborhood that we live in. Unfortunately, only thirty-three days after we moved in, we sat across from the oncologist who said to my beloved husband that he had stage four cancer and was terminal. He fought a courageous fight, but eventually lost the battle. You never think you're going to be in this position, and I hope that you are not. Your life can change in an afternoon. I have had many changes in the last few years that I cannot reverse. But the one constant thing that hasn't changed is my home and my neighborhood. I just read a study that said, "When you lose a mate, you lose 75% of your social life and you lose probably more than half of your income." That is true, but I am thankful that I have not lost my neighbors. One stormy, stormy night, our electricity went out and it started to get really cold in my house. So I started putting on my ski clothes and bundling up. And all of a sudden, it was so cold, still cold, that I thought I need to leave and head up for McDonald's. The only problem was I couldn't open up my garage door. So I crawled across the street in the snow to my neighbors, Lori and Ron, who have a generator in their house. They quickly wrapped me in a blanket where I could drink some hot chocolate and warm up. And I stayed there the rest of the night until my home was back, back heated up. So it's great to have wonderful neighbors. Last year, with the challenge of rising expenses, some friends of ours encouraged me to rent my house a few times. And I have to tell you what a positive experience this has been, probably because I can be very selective to who I went to. I've been able to meet the people before they come into my house. And VRBO actually is a self-governing organization in that you can read the reviews of the people that are going to stay with you. And also, when they leave, I write a review. Of course, probably the greatest safeguard that I have is that I have a thousand-dollar deposit. If there's any problem, I can immediately have those people leave. And they are very interested in getting their thousand dollars because of that. That is much different than the house down the block from us last, last year, that the people got a divorce and the house went into total disarray and there was no way we could get rid of them. In this debate, there have been many...
Ms. Rude, you're, you're out of time, so, but thank you. So next we have Becky Hall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilors, for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Becky Hall. I live at 4760 Leonard Road in Duluth, Minnesota. And I'm here to implore you to table this proposed ban of short-term rentals and develop a compromise that has a better solution for your community. I recently read an excellent blog statement by Councilor Shannon Bruce on this issue and I brought copies tonight. I really appreciate her common sense approach to resolving this in the best interest of all citizens of Minatrista rather than basing a decision on the highly emotionally charged and organized loud voices of a few. Where, whereas some tonight might think a ban will solve a nuisance problem, it also will pay one serious unintended, I'm sure, consequence, forcing some of your citizens out of their homes, like my Aunt Sandy Rude. Council Bruce stated in her blog that the remedy should be relative to the magnitude of the problem. But the city doesn't know how big the problem is because it's never been tracked. She asked, "Are the complaints coming from one or two properties or 20?" Nobody seems to know. Well, here's how it appeared at the April planning meeting. A handful of neighbors, maybe three, complained about one specific home on Lake Minnetonka. The name Cedar Point kept coming up over and over again, which is owned by two families who enjoyed it for themselves, but occasionally rented out when they're not using it. The most telling and ironic thing about this one problem, property, was that neighbors were complaining about one specific occasion when 21 people were staying at the short-term rental and causing all kinds of disturbances. And rightfully so. They argued that they don't want this kind of activity in their neighborhood. Who can blame them? The ironic thing about this is that one of the owners admitted that, at the meeting, that those 21 people weren't renters. It was his family and friends. And he took time to apologize, thankfully. This should tell you that this ban, that your proposal tonight would not have prevented this issue that neighbors were complaining about. Rather, strongly enforcing your public safety nuisance ordinances would prevent such behavior for short-term and long-term residents alike. This ban, however, will most definitely have an extreme effect on those in your community who responsibly look for a way to sustain their livelihoods and ability to stay in their homes. As Council Bruce stated in her blog, "I think we owe it to them to at least take time to measure the scale of this problem so we can arrive at a measured, appropriate response to it." I hope, Madam Mayor and councilors, you agree and will consider doing so. Please continue, continue to ponder the effects of short-term rentals in your community and take time to consider the, the benefits they pose, which are many. Owners take pride in keeping up their properties, which result in attracting good customers. That's good, that's a good thing for Minatrista. They're good neighbors. Remember, we're talking about homeowners here. They don't want trouble with their neighbors. Their efforts attract kind and considerate customers who respect their property and the neighborhood. But most importantly, it allows some the ability to stay in this beautiful community and continue their part as good neighbors to keep it beautiful. As you know, governing is not easy.
Ms. Hall, I'm sorry.
An ordinance that all right bans short-term rentals is a thinking issue.
Ms. Hall, everybody, I have to keep it, I'm sorry. Everybody is giving, everybody is giving the same amount of time. Thank you very, thank you for your comments.
Come up with a very thoughtful thing that, that does influence on their, their ability to...
Thank you for your time. Thank you. So we have Sherry Nordstrom.
Hi, thank you for listening. My name is Cheryl Nordstrom. My address is 661 Parker Avenue, East, Dassel, Minnesota. I'm here for my sister. We were raised with the American dream that, you know what? If you work hard, your dreams will come true. You can own a home. My sister and husband started out with nothing. They were the epitome of the flipping homes. They bought a dump in South Minneapolis, they fixed up, it was written up and it started to be... And that was just a spark. They came from neighborhood to neighborhood, better school systems for their kids. They fixed up their homes. They bought this home in Minatrista that was falling down. Two years, they owned it before they were able to move in because they fixed it up. I'm here to beg you, to implore you to really think about the consequences, to look at both sides. I don't think that one short-term rental where a disgruntled neighbor is complaining, I don't see that there were any complaints with the police department, things about parking. I just really hope that you will take a breath and, and think about both sides and, you know, give it some time. This is a life-changing matter for my sister. And, you know, I, I just trust that you will weigh both sides and give some time on it. So I thank you for your time. Go for it.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Nordstrom. Next we have, is it Darren Hargraves?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Yes, ladies and gentlemen. I, this is a problem. And I came here tonight and have jotted out some notes again similar. I've sent an email to each of you, so you probably know what my thoughts are on my wife's thoughts as well. There's not a lot of, I've heard a couple times that there's only select few. Well, that's not necessarily the case. This is a community. My wife's at work. I'm giving out the opportunity to see my son be awarded for competing international media at a, at a school award meeting, because I think this is important. And I feel terrible who's this Ruth, etc. And it's unfortunate that she's in this situation because it's not about our residents renting out their homes. I think it's more about non-residents purchasing houses and using them as, as rental properties for businesses for profit in our neighborhoods, in our residential neighborhoods. And I stated that had I known that this was even ever going to be an issue, which I never foresaw it, we probably would have not purchased a house here. We would have went a little bit further towards Orno where, where it's a lot less of a drive for us and there's some other advantages in this ban. But I'm, I'm still, I'm still opposed to the short-term rental, but I'm willing to support the ordinance for the 30 days. And I remember a number of years back, I coached baseball with a gentleman who's moved out here for the summer. And we coached together, our kids played baseball together. And he was here, part of the community in that, in the summer. He went back to the home in Minneapolis. So I know it can work. And you can rent the houses for 30 days, hopefully make enough income to stay in it, I would hope. But it's interesting that most people speaking here tonight aren't residents of Minatrista or people that voted for you to represent them. They're from outside. And unfortunately, maybe if, if something would have been decided a couple of years ago, instead of putting it off again and again, that even these people that were investing in businesses, and I'm in business, so I get it. Maybe they went to invest in this business, but they knew that it was something that they shouldn't be doing because they have a chance that it's going to be opposed. And if we delay it, then the issue's just going to expand. And you're going to be talking about this next year, and there's going to be more people that are going to be at a disadvantage. So I would hope that, we're all pretty smart folks. I don't think we're as naive out here as some people may think we are. We ought to be able to protect people like Mrs. Ruth, that are residents, that are homesteaders here, that vote here, that raise their kids here, their grandkids come here, as opposed to those that are buying our properties in our neighborhoods for profit. It's a huge difference. So...
Your three minutes are up. Your three minutes are up.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
You bet.
Yep. I don't have anybody else signed up, but I'm sure there's other people that would like to speak. So I'm going to, I'll tell you what we're going to do. We're going to start on this side in the front. If you'd like to speak, come to the podium. You're next. Again, you need to state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Dick Coons. I live at five-three-seven-five Cedar Point Road. And I didn't expect your, I just certainly didn't prepare a statement. We've lived at our, our house for 32 years, so we've seen a lot of changes in the neighborhood. Two houses to the west of us are absentee ownership. Our store across the street is absentee ownership. The house we live to east is absentee ownership. And these people are fortunate, you know, they're wealthy enough to be able to afford a summer home. But this for sale by, or for rent by owner is, is bothering me a little bit. On the other hand, I do believe in free enterprise. I believe people should do, be able to do what they want with their property within limits. And that's the problem I had with this one, that five... And that's the problem I have with this one five-three, five-five. Now, I haven't directly seen the ads, but I've heard that they've been advertising states of twenty-four people. Is that right or wrong? Correct. I think that's unreasonable. I think there should be limits to this. And unless it's controlled, we're going to run into a fight of ours. We just can't, we can't live with that sort of activity around the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coons. Okay, so.
Is this just for rent?
Yes, yeah. So, I'm going to, anybody else in the front row over here? Anybody else? Okay. And then in the second row over here, across from Mr. Coons, anybody in this row wishing to speak? Okay?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Pierre Cavesto. I also live at fifty-seven twenty Cambridge Drive in Edina. I'm here to speak on behalf of a friend of mine, Sandy Rude, and this idea of the vacation rentals. I am personally a travel, airline industry consultant, and I travel all over the world. And when I do that, my company requires that I stay in a hotel, and I stay at some of the most wonderful places. However, when I choose to travel on personal matters, whether it be moving to America, my wife said much more eloquently than me, in other countries, we choose to stay at vacation rental places. The reason we do that is for the experience. It greatly increases the anticipation of the trip. We build a connection with the people that are renting. I have wonderful stories that I have told over and over again from my trips across this country. It has greatly enriched what I believe to be something that we each do just a little bit each year. It's not a major business that this is with those people that I've encountered, and I think it's something that goes a long way toward building community and trust in people.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cavesto. Anybody else in that row? No, no, hold on. Anybody else, okay, going behind Mr. Coons? I think you've both have already spoken, so now I'm going to move across the aisle again. The people in the third row, anybody in the third row that wishes to speak?
My name's Aaron Masted. I live at thirty-three eighty Arts Drive Road. So, we moved to Minutrista about twelve years ago, and I moved into the North Saunders Lake neighborhood. What drew us here was a sense of community, the neighborhood, and how peaceful it is. And I guess I just don't want to see hotels coming in next door to the lower right-hand way down. We bought a house in the lake about four years ago, but updating it for the last four years, and our neighbors are potentially going to be putting it up for sale. And the idea of having a house which has kind of a transient population coming and going scares me out slightly. So, I guess I'll just keep it simple and just let you guys know that I'm against this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Masted. Anybody else in that back row there? Okay, so I'll move on over here. So, anybody next to the last row, and then I'm getting to you. Okay? Come forward.
Are you ready?
No. Yes. Saying no to Mr. Coons, no, you come forward.
I'm Janet Haskin. I've lived through many years, and I feel that the short-term rentals take away the neighborhood feel around your neighbors, and they basically just have a revolving door. And short-term rents, we prefer to keep the neighborhoods where they are.
Okay.
It's fair to say that.
Okay.
And I do feel it's also affects the value of the house, and it would take longer to sell a house that's next to a house that's doing vacation rentals.
Okay. Anybody else in that same row? Okay, and now, last row there, please come forward.
Good evening.
My name is Betsy Fundaburk. I live at fifty-three forty-five Cedar Point Road. Tonight, I just want to address some things that were brought up at the opposing, from the opposing side from the last meetings, and then some of the comments says some of the owners of the house next door. I do want to start out and ask a question to Mr. and Mrs. Cavesto from Edina.
You need to address the council. This isn't.
Okay, I'm wondering if they have a short-term rental next door to them or across the street?
Probably not.
Yeah, and would they like it? Probably not. One of the things that brought, at the last meeting, was the possibility of regulating these short-term businesses, rentals. And most of the communities aren't doing this because it's just not doable. What it does is it puts all the burden on the neighbors. It puts it on me to watch who's coming, who's going, are they doing things illegal? That's not something that you should do to your neighbors. That's not right. Also, what was talked about is the three-strike rule. Some of the property managers got up and talked about, well, three strikes in your own. Well, okay, well, three strikes. I just had to put up with three weeks of intolerable behavior next door to me, and that's not right either. It puts the burden on me. Plus, if I'm calling the police, how do I know the renters aren't going to be mad at me? It's not the property manager. We don't want to spend time doing this. We work hard to live here. We shouldn't have to do that. I also wanted to address one of the other owner's statements, that we don't have to worry about safety. That's just absolutely absurd. They don't do background checks on people. They can't do background checks on people. There's multiple people renting these properties, and they can't spend the time, money, and energy to do background checks. That's not possible. And even if they could do background checks, what about the people that come that aren't renters there that are just friends that want to come and party? They don't know these people, and neither do we. I read the owner, in the owner's letter, that she had no idea who would have commented to my daughter. And that's just the thing. They don't know these people. Nobody knows them. For the record, it was a large group of twenty-to-thirty-year-old guys who were frequently hanging out in your driveway, smoking pot and drinking and using foul language. We have no idea if these renters are sex offenders, drug users, or have criminal records. We just don't know. My neighbor wrote in her letter that the beauty of short-term rentals is that they don't have to run to bad renters. Again, but that puts my family out. They don't have to run to them again, but there is no beauty in it for us to have to live next door to this when we've worked hard to live on Lake. There's no upside to allowing this. And a wait-and-see attitude is not the right thing to do. Wait and see for what? Do we want this? Do your residents want it? No. Does it lower our property values? Yes. Does it infringe on our safety? Yes. Please pass an ordinance banning new and existing short-term rentals for the people of Minutrista who you represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else in the last row?
Eric Fundaburk, fifty-three forty-five Cedar Point Road. So, I'm Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for taking some more time and addressing this issue. I guess I'd like to start with just a couple of things. With all you folks up here, who would want this next door? Who would say, boy, I hope that house next to me goes for sale, and I hope it goes to become a vacation after. I just can't see that happening. In fact, many of us are probably going to, if we're out there, many of our friends, we kind of live in fear that someday we're going to wake up and see that for sale something next to us, and then we're thinking, oh, my God, I hope this thing doesn't happen or it doesn't sell with somebody who's going to put this on the rental market. We live in a community here in Minutrista. We spend a lot of money, we pay a lot of taxes. To be part of this community, to have kind of a network of friends and families that we hang around with, and this short-term rental kind of eats into that, kind of just takes a bite, as somebody would say, out of the community that we have. Scott got up here, he's a first gentleman, spoke very eloquently. He's a property manager. It's not surprising to me that a property manager is going to come up here and be for property management. That's no surprise. He's happy about that. Mrs. Hall, I mean, I understand what you're saying on your point, but I think you got some of your facts mixed up, most specific to the stories.
Just address the council.
I'm sorry. But some of the facts that you may have heard may not have been actually accurate, so that's kind of tough to hear with them. This thing is very, very important to us. Just a few things. Shorewood, they stepped up, they said no to this. Greenwood stepped up, they said no to this. Woodland said no. E. Beaton said no. Spring Park said no. Even Orno just passed an ordinance on February twenty-six for hitting rentals for less than thirty days except if its owner occupied. And they can only rent out the two rooms of the house while it's occupied by the owner. This essentially stops the investment guy from coming in and doing this thing. Dr. Beatty did something similar. They're trying to stop the investment guy from coming in here and doing this thing. No one wants to, again, get up and say to Mrs. Rude that this is the terrible situation that you're in. But at the same time, there's many other people in this community that are affected, and we need to kind of address and stop the short-term rental ban now. We can do that now. We can, I'm sorry, not stop the ban. We can stop short-term rentals now. We have that within the power to do. And I'm asking you if you could step up and do it. I know it's, it can be uncomfortable. I know it's a circumstance, it's awkward, but we just want to make sure that this community stays the way that it is and that we don't have short-term rentals. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fundaburk. I believe that is everybody that is here that wish to speak. Anybody else wishing to speak that hasn't already? So, we'll take it back, and thank you all for all of your comments. So, we'll take it back to the council now. Ms. Bruce, you said you had wanted to make some comments?
Yeah.
I'll start with you.
I'd like maybe five minutes of uninterrupted time.
No, you have three.
No, I mean five.
You can take as long as you like. You're on the council.
I just wanted to say first off that the comments that I'm going to make are about the homesteaded properties and their right to rent out their properties doing short-term rentals. I'm not talking about properties that are purchased solely for the purpose of vacation rentals. I think those properties are clearly commercial use, and they belong in a commercial zone, and so I don't have any problem regulating those. But whenever the council is presented with a problem, you have a continuum of solutions that go from less intrusive to very extreme that you can end up just trampling on people's rights. And I think whenever you decide to ban something, that's at the far end of the extreme continuum. And I think we need to, that should only be a last resort when there aren't any other alternatives. Banning something should be a last resort, not the first thing that you jump towards. Because we've, and the thing that changed my mind, and I was in agreement that we should do a ban at the last meeting, but we've become aware of unintended consequences from these things. And I think anytime you regulate something or you ban something, you're going to see unintended consequences. And I think we're seeing that with Ms. Rude's situation. Short-term rentals, short-term rentals have, they are, and they have been long-established legitimate purposes that people have used to make income, to make extra income. And if we're, if we as a council are going to tell people that we're taking that away from them, I think there may be a constitutional issue here. And I think the city leaves itself vulnerable to litigation over that if we decide to take this extreme measure and ban it when there are less extreme measures and solutions that we can look at. I think it's a good idea to understand the scope of the issue, and I don't think we can make a decision based on emotional emails that we've heard on both sides. I think we've all seen them in our inboxes, and we've read them, and I understand both sides, and I wouldn't want to live next door to one. I sympathize with the other side as well. But we can't simply react to emotional emails. I want to know how many properties, how many problem properties are in Minutrista? And no one can tell me that. Before we find a solution, I want to know how many problem properties we have. And we don't know. If there's two, if there's ten, if there's thirty, we don't know. I asked, and the answer was, we don't know. I want to know how many complaints have been lodged against the short-term usage of the short-term rental usage of properties? And the answer to that, I asked, was, we don't know. I want to know how many citations have been issued against short-term rental properties? And the answer to that was, we don't know. I want to know if these problem properties, if they're homesteaded or if they're not, are they indeed people outside Minutrista or are they here and living in these homes? Because I think you approach those situations differently, and a banning ordinance isn't going to fix them all. So, I believe that tracking this problem is very important, and it's a responsible action to take before trampling on people's property rights. I think the way this ordinance, and I have a question for Mr. Beatty. The ordinance under enforcement, Section three C, it says, "The city hereby further declares the short-term rental of any dwelling as a public nuisance." I took the liberty of talking to an attorney about that, and clearly, all short-term rentals are not public nuisances. We have some from responsible property owners, and they are not public nuisances. I think the city is trying to get around the non-conforming use statute by using that language and making this a public nuisance instead of, and that statement is clearly false, and I've got a problem with that. Because I think the city could be sued by existing owners to enforce their grandfather rights, and maybe you can explain what that statute means about non-conforming use, but essentially, it gives people the right that when they have a property that they've purchased for a specific use, the city can't come in and just blanketly take that right away from them without grandfathering them in unless they declare it a public nuisance. And I don't think we can declare this a public nuisance.
Did you want Mr. Beatty to answer that?
I'd like your take on that.
Sure, council. I think there are two different things going on here. One, and I think it's a critical issue, is whether there are non-conforming rights here. What the ordinance essentially says is there are none. Really, the question is, were these things ever legal at all? That's subject to debate, but the position that the ordinance takes is, no, they were never legal. And if they were never legal, no one ever established non-conforming rights. Non-conforming rights come into effect when something wasn't, was legal, was consistent with the ordinances in effect at the time, and became illegal after the passage of an ordinance. If it was never permitted to begin with, then you don't establish any non-conforming rights.
And where in our city code is it shown that it's illegal?
Well, the general position in zoning ordinances is if it's not listed as a permitted use, it is prohibited. That's a general proposition in zoning law.
But it's not specifically prohibited in our.
That's correct.
Well, but it is in essence.
Right, but it's not specifically.
No, but I mean, that's, that's, that's the general, right. You know, and what the, and again, this is a debatable point. People can agree with this or not. But the point of the ordinance, or what the language in the ordinance says, is this is to clarify the fact that it was never legal to begin with. Otherwise, you would be in a situation of talking about grandfathering, even if the ordinance went into effect, we'd be talking about allowing people, at least to the extent that they had done it before, to continue to do that and only ban the future ones. This ordinance, if it's adopted in this form, would say, never legal, no non-conforming rights.
And I think we have to give some relief to people that made a decision to purchase a home in Minutrista, because I read an email where somebody actually looked at our ordinances to see if it was illegal to do this.
But that can't be proven, too.
Sure, but there are unintended consequences whenever you ban something. And I think we have to look at grandfathering some of these properties.
So, what you're saying, you're in favor of grandfathering some of the properties in and/or maybe having some kind of regulations, regulating them? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I'm saying we need to take a step back, and we need to gather enough information so that we can determine what the scope of this problem is in reality, not based on emotional emails that we're getting. That's what I'm saying. I'm not proposing to do anything right now because we don't have the information to do anything right now.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
May I ask a question of the crowd?
Sure.
Of those of you that were here that are here that spoke and that you are against this ordinance, how many of you are homesteading these properties that are in question? Just raise your hand. Just raise your hand.
One individual.
That's what I suspected.
But that's not representative of the community.
No, no, hold on, hold on. Ms. Bruce, Ms. Bruce, Mr. Trumpolin has the floor.
My, what I'm getting at is, if we don't want to harm certain people who are actually living there and are using their house occasionally, for whatever purpose, they go to some place and they swap with someone else, and it's a short term, but they are living there, they're homesteading it, they're getting their mail there, their driver's license says they live there, I don't think those are people that we want this ordinance to hit. We are looking at investment property where the property was specifically purchased just for rental. 36524, probably not a very hot topic here in the winter, but it's still something.
Ice fishing.
I could dig it, but, so if we're going to have an ordinance come through, at a minimum, my concern would be to write it in such a way that the homesteading is not affected. How do we enforce that? Addresses are identifiable on the Hennepin County property tax rolls as to whether they're homesteaded or not. There is one here that I looked up that I was aware of the address that did confuse me, because it says it's homesteaded. But when I looked at the address of the person who owns it, where they actually live, theirs is not homesteaded. So I'm not sure if Hennepin County's got that right or not. So there may be some that fall through the cracks just because of the way they're in the Hennepin County tax rolls, but I still think it would address the majority of the ones that I'm concerned about.
So you're in favor of some kind of regulation, because that would be regulating them, and some kind of limitation? What that is, we can discuss, but I'm just kind of asking.
Just not a blanket that everybody who rents their house, whether it's one day or 29 days, that they can't do it.
Okay, okay. Mr. Maliter, what's?
Sure. Couple things I'd like to address. A couple of comments been made about homestead. To put it bluntly, homestead is widely abused. And part of the reason for that is because, and I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, at some point from a valuation perspective, it doesn't matter if you homestead or not. And so I think if you went off a homestead, you'd be widely deceived. As a matter of fact, I know for a fact, a number of the properties in question that are not owner-occupied are in fact homesteaded. So I don't think that's enforced very well, because it, well, first of all, just from what I've seen, and also, if you look, to your point about the one you looked up, you can look up others, and they're registered to a corporation. Not sure how a corporation can be homesteaded, therefore, it doesn't leave me a lot of comfort in saying, let's go based on homestead. Now, I get the gist of what you're saying, and I'm not entirely opposed to that, but to rely on the homesteady classification for tax purposes, we're all just deceiving ourselves. So I just want to make that point. To your other point about, I think it's made a couple of times, you know, there was a comment about Orinol and the ordinance that they have about having to have someone on site, you know, that might be a way to address that without trying to rely on the tax code, or the tax classification, because that's simply just not accurate. So that's one of my first things. In terms of time of looking at this, you know, we've, as was mentioned, we've talked about this for a year. I also want to make sure that, you know, if we're going to track and look for data to real, the only thing that I'm actively thinking about is that you'd have to look at police records. And that, to me, is pretty extreme. My experience as a resident of the city for a number of years has been that I don't like to call the police, no offense, but you just don't want to do that, right? I mean, we live here, and we don't want to have to call the police, especially every weekend, because there's a different person there all the time. So I think if you went just on police data, police calls, even complaints to the city, because I don't like to call the city either, no offense there either, but I think you'd be misled and underrepresented by the number of complaints that would be out there. So I, I'm not, I don't think we'd ever, me, that sounds more like a delay tactic that just is going to push this farther out and make the problem worse, because as cities around us deal with this, it just makes us a haven for more of this type of activity. You know, the pattern I've seen has been that the people that don't live here really enjoy it. The people that voted for me live here, and I think I need to represent them. In terms of potential litigation, anytime we pass any ordinance, we run into potential litigation, and even for ordinances that are already in the books, that we've had that with Prairie and Viewshed, that we got into litigation, and that was an ordinance that was on the books for 50 years. So there's always that risk, and that's just the nature of being in government. I think there is a big effect on property values. I've seen firsthand in a lot of houses that are not selling. I think the point about, I've heard this from a number of people, you don't know what's going to move in now. You know, I bought this land, this property, and live here based on the ordinances that were here, and said that this is a residential area. We didn't buy next to a hotel, and that's what people are thinking here. So, you know, there are property rights, but we have to balance those, that they cannot infringe on the property rights of others, and that's always a tough balancing act. We run that with a lot of things, from this to noise issues to unkept property, and the list goes down the line. So I think, you know, those are some of the big issues that I run it through my mind on this topic.
I find this a very difficult subject, like Mike had mentioned and others. There's always two sides of every type of subject like this. I don't consider the 30-day minimum rental an extreme solution, and I think one of the biggest problems with the rental properties is the constant coming and going of people right next door to you. You don't know who they are. There are safety issues. There are parking issues. There's a list here I'm staring at of 12 different issues. I'm telling you, if I lived next to this every day or every weekend in the summer, when I want to be enjoying my property, I would have a problem with this, too. So it has been noted by other surrounding communities that there is a need for some type of an ordinance, and the more surrounding communities that do this, it kind of pushes these type of properties into Minatrista. And I do find it very interesting that a lot of the people that were up here speaking for it are property management-type people. They are not residents of Minatrista. And I have a problem with that, too. The residents of Minatrista voted for me, and I, and Sandy, I understand your situation, and I feel that you were very open to a compromise. And in my view, having a 30-day minimum rental-type ordinance is a form of a compromise. So that's pretty much where I stand. I am in favor of, oh, and I would like to say, I don't think we shouldn't enact it until the end of this year as well.
So there's always two sides to every issue, and of course, emotions both sides. We've heard a lot of different people speak, and here's, so there's a few things. One, I do believe that there is a need to enact an ordinance, whether it's outright total ban or whether it's some form of restriction, regulation, or whatever. But we do need it, because it's, there's a lot of communities that are outright banning them or very seriously regulating them, and what that will do is, Ms. Mortensen said, it will push the people more and more to Minatrista. I think we all agree. I think this is something, so let's look at what we do agree on. It seems like we all agree, we want to stop or hinder, if you will, discontinue the LLCs, the people that come here as a business, running it as a business or as a resort. It seems to me there's a little more open-mindedness, or no, I don't want to put it that way, but a little more where if it's owner-occupied, now that would have to be, we'd have to flush that out. How would you determine that? What means owner-occupied, not necessarily homesteaded, but somehow or other? You know, there's, if you, and I know Ms. Funderburke had said, if you regulate it, then it puts the neighbor making, the neighbor have to call the police or the city. But if you, regardless of whether you regulate it or whether you outright ban it, it still puts the onerous on the neighboring properties to inform the city that a property next to you or in your neighborhood is operating a VRBO, that type of thing. Because the city doesn't go around knocking on doors, asking people if you operate a VRBO. We don't go trolling in the internet to look to see where they are. The only reason we have recently is because of this ordinance consideration. Last year, or in 2016, when we looked at this ordinance, we found 12. We found 12 homes in our community on the internet that we could tell were operating it as a VRBO. Today, there's 19 listed. That says that there is an increase, and there, and I do believe that there will be a continued increase because of the limited cities that allow this. So I think everybody says, Ms. Rude, we understand what you're saying. I think Ms. Bruce said she likes property rights, so, but I don't think that we can sit back for a year or two and decide, you know, who's being called and how many calls there are. That's not the issue. The issue is if this council, we need to decide what's best for our community, what the residents want in our community, and how we can, if you will, regulate it or ban it. But I don't think to say, well, we shouldn't do anything right now until we get more information. I don't think that's the right thing. I don't think that's what our residents want. So what I would suggest is if we're interested in some kind of regulating this, unless we're interested in outright banning as it's presented, then we should get staff direction in terms of what we would want to see specific, and then have them bring that back, and then pass an ordinance. And I'm not talking about two or three months from now, I'm saying sooner than later. The other thing we could do, and I would highly recommend that we do, is we have a sunset for the current properties that are currently operating, and that we enact the ordinance and include in the ordinance a sunset provision, and that might be four months or five months. But I know that VRBOs, they do have usually four, five months of bookings. They go out sometimes two, three, four, five months. And just to say, as of today, as of the time we adopt this, that it's no longer allowed, that could, that could put us in a bind. That might set us up for some type of litigation. So I would highly recommend that we do a sunset, whether it's four, three months, four months, five months. That would give the operators an opportunity to find long-term renters, might be an option, to do, to figure out what else they might like to do would be another option, and/or to talk to their neighbors and see how they can, how things could improve, depending on what the outcome is. So what is?
If, if we decide to go the permitting, regulating route, which I still don't agree about doing that without having, not even knowing how many of these problem properties we have, I think it would be, we should also consider possibly changing the 30-day definition of short-term rental to seven days or less. I think Florida did that. And it gets rid of the weekend parties that you see, it gets rid of the weddings and the parties that we hear are being problematic. But I'd like to consider changing the definition from 30 days to seven days. It would allow people like Ms. Rude to continue renting out her house, and so that's my only comment there. But I'm still uncomfortable without knowing how many problem properties we have doing anything right now.
It's not necessarily identifying problem properties, because there may be more in the city that aren't problems. But we need to consider why we want this and why, why the residents in our community don't want a VRBO next to them. That's, that's the issue. It's not necessarily whether it's a problem per se on a nightly basis or on a weekend basis, but what, what does it do for the community? What does it do for the neighborhood? Those are issues, too. I think some of the things that were mentioned, and again, there's exceptions to the rule, but some of the things that were mentioned is the constant coming and going. Some of the things that were mentioned is the, there's no more, you lose that cohesiveness in the community, in the neighborhood. If you have two or three VRBOs within your block or within your neighborhood, now, you know, depending on how big you are, all of a sudden, you're losing that, that neighborly feeling. Those are all things that people move here for. Those are things that we have to consider as well, not just are they a problem property? That might in and of itself be a problem for the neighborhood.
And I think we also have to consider that this has been a long-established legitimate use of property, right, properties to generate income for people, and I don't take that lightly.
I don't think any of us do.
I do have one, just kind of a language concern. When I hear the term sunset, and Mr. Beatty can perhaps help out here, but sunset, to me, usually means that you're taking, as an example, if you write a law and you put a sunset provision in, it usually means that's when it ends, therefore, the word sunset. I don't think that's what we want to put in here. I think we all know the intent, and the intent would be an effective date at some point in the future, perhaps 1231 of this year or something like that. But we just have to be careful not to say sunset, because that would mean something entirely different, so.
I agree. I understood the intent to be what you are describing. Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
If I could just make a comment, I think several of you have hit upon this. I think the primary decision that the council needs to make is whether you're going to ban these or regulate them. And if you're going to regulate them, then there are lots of ways of doing that. We can talk about what kinds of conditions and terms and who gets approved, and it would be a licensing scenario, most likely, and who would be eligible for a license. That's one path to go that's distinct, in my opinion, from a ban on these things. And so I think, I think all of you have addressed that, but I think that's the key distinction in terms of which way staff is going to go. Current ordinance is a ban. If that's the way to go, then there'll be this ordinance or some rewrite of this ordinance. If there's an interest in regulating them through a licensing or other procedure, then we're talking about a different approach.
So I have a question. You know, I know some, some cities have ordinances prohibiting or banning, if you will. I know this sounds weird. It's not, but, so chickens, for instance, okay? Because they're loud, whatever. And then some cities have implemented ordinances that say, well, you have to get the permission of your neighbors. How legal is that and/or could that be a part of a regulated situation or ordinance?
Yeah, that, I knew as soon as you said chickens, you were going to talk about that, because that is a very common provision in those ordinances. I think the quick answer is that it doesn't work well in strict land use situations, but it does, it is permissible in licensing. In other words, if we were granting a conditional use permit, it wouldn't be appropriate to say, let's have a show of hands here as to how many people are in favor of it. But if you adopt a licensing approach, one of the conditions, I think, could be to require that there be some level of neighborhood assent for allowing this. I think we'd have to be careful about that. You don't want to make it overly burdensome. But yes, I think that is an element. But yes, I think that is an element that could be included in a regulatory scheme.
I do have a question. I appreciate your comments about the banning versus the regulation, and I think we all kind of understand that, to sort of, by and large. But I suspect it might be just a little bit more nuanced in a ban if it were written such that it had certain issues that, it had certain, and what I'm thinking about is that, and we would probably have to, well, we definitely have to look into this more, is that if it would be banned with the exception that it has to be owner occupied, or something like that. In that case, it's still a ban, but we're not putting a license or regulation on it. Is that...
Yeah, Mr. Malder, I think you raised an interesting point. And I was going, going to raise something similar. I, the way the term is defined, it covers all short-term rentals. I think what you're suggesting is that it might maybe possible to define the term to exclude some set of situations. The one that had occurred to me frankly was people who do it very infrequently. And, you know, the example that I thought of is there were a number of people, I'm assuming, who rented their house during the Super Bowl. Maybe it was a one-time event. Most people wouldn't object to that. There may be people who do this activity on a relatively infrequent basis. I don't know what that number is. But yes, it might be possible to define the activity that we're banning to exclude a certain group or a certain level of activity, which would allow that to continue.
Without having a regulation scheme in place.
Yes. Now, yes, but you trip, another comment that I was going to make. I just, I think this is apparent to everybody, but no matter what you do, ban them, regulate them, do nothing, there is going to be a, in my opinion, quite substantial enforcement issue. Because as the mayor said, the neighbors are going to be the ones, whether you ban them or permit them and license them in some way, the neighbors are the eyes and ears, because the city doesn't go out and do that. And so the staff is going to get those calls, that they're still doing it, or, or whatever the, or they're doing it more frequently than they're supposed to. So this is going to, this is going to involve, I think, substantial regulatory enforcement issues and a good burden on staff.
Well, on the other hand though, and I know I said this to you, you know, I think as a city council, we have to be careful not to just say, well, we're not going to enforce, or we're not going to do an ordinance because it's going to be difficult to enforce. Then you might as well not have any ordinances, because every ordinance could be very difficult to enforce. So I disagree with, or I don't think it's a good argument to say, well, we shouldn't do it because it's going to be difficult, or costly, or time-consuming to enforce.
I agree. And I wasn't making that argument against the ordinance. I was simply pointing out maybe what's obvious, that whatever you do...
Or don't do.
Or don't do.
Or don't do.
Well, I mean, this is an issue that has now come to the fore. And, and everybody is dealing with it. Lake communities in particular.
Right.
It's here. It's an enforcement issue. And so that's not an argument in favor of or against any particular ordinance. It was simply meant as sort of a, what I think, a statement of fact, that whatever you do, or don't do, there are going to be enforcement issues. And I just think we have to recognize that.
Right. Okay.
If I may, along those same lines, one thing I think we need to, like all ordinances that we have, they're basically tools, right? We put an ordinance in place to drive behavior. It's not the only tool that city staff, whether it be your folks here, the police, use. I mean, there's a number of tools that they can use. What this does is simply adds a tool to the toolkit, in my opinion. It's not, there's other ways to deal with this, whether it be through neighborhood discussions, whether it be a phone call, but this is a way to add to the toolkit to an issue that's obviously of importance to a lot of people.
Okay. Mr. Trump, then?
I agree with Mr. Beatty. Whether we did nothing or do everything, or something in the middle, it's still enforcement. I think Mr. Malder made a point at the planning commission a month ago. Speed limits out here are a certain speed. If there's nobody sitting out there clocking them, people go by here at 60 miles an hour, it's no problem, because nobody's reporting it. So if we enforce, or if we put an ordinance in, and let's say it is modified to somehow identify homeowners, which again, I still would like to find a way for that, people who actually reside, it's still going to be up to the neighbors. If you think there's an issue, you need to call the city and find out. That's the only way it's ever going to work, no matter what it is.
And I, just one last thing. If we're going to do something, I prefer the regulatory approach rather than a complete banning approach, because I think it's not as intrusive. But I still think if that's going to put a burden on staff to enforce, and it's going to cost our citizens money to pay for that burden and cost, that we should at least know how many properties are at issue here. And I, I think it's important to understand that before we incur those costs. No, we don't.
Well, as far as we know, there's 18 or 19. That's what we can, that's what we've been able to determine thus far.
I'm talking about problem properties. Properties that, that people are objecting about, and we don't know how many those are. I want to understand how big this problem is before we spend money on it. And I don't think we know how big it is.
Okay. So are we, so then the question is, are we comfortable? And I'm hearing a number of people say they'd like to at least have something in the ordinance stating that owner occupied residences are allowed. If that is the road we want to go down, I would like to add a number of other restrictions so that we have as few problems as possible. Things like making it mandatory that all vehicles park on-site, not on the street. I know that in some areas of our, of our city, specifically out on the island and out in areas on the lake, the streets are small, you know? Owner occupied, I think I've heard that from almost all of you. No pets. I mean, you know, I know that sounds weird, but you have somebody come in with their dog that they don't, you know, we don't know, is that dog licensed? Does it, is it up to date on its rabies shots? I mean, these are issues that we should be looking at. You know, what about neighborhood approval? I think that's important. What about HOAs? Does the HOA board have to approve, or just the neighbors? I mean, I actually know that there's some HOAs in this community that outright ban them, and there's people that are still doing it in the HOA. So, I mean, that's, that's another issue. What if it's not on city sewer? What about septic systems? That's a health issue. Are we going to make a requirement that they get a compliance inspection done every two years? That might be something that needs to be done. No parties, no events. I don't think if we're going to open it up to residential people, property owners that live there, then that's fine, but no parties. No parties larger than six individuals. And the reason, because it's parties and events and weddings that cause, cause the problems. Six individuals, or four individuals, may not, but parties do. Those are just some of the thoughts I had if you want to open it up for regulation, or want to do more regulatory versus, versus... And then they'd have to come in for a permit.
One question I had. So we model this ordinance off of another city in the neighboring community. I think, if I understand right, did Orenel recently pass something on, say, upon this topic?
I haven't seen it.
Okay.
But I think, I know they've either done it or are looking at it, as are many Lake communities.
Right. Okay. Want to know if there was something that we wanted to model after, other than what we've got here.
Something that I did read in a publication called thehill.com is that state legislatures are starting to consider preempting city ordinances like this. And that's starting to happen throughout the country. So that's something else to consider, is, and something that we may want to look into. Is there something going on in the, in the state legislature with the, that could preempt this? And are we going to all of this expense and time to draft something and impose something that's going to be preempted by the state?
I haven't heard of anything that's even in a bill.
It's thehill.com. It's online.
No, I'm saying I haven't heard that there's a bill in the committee or anything.
I don't know.
And I think the committee deadlines have passed.
No, I, I don't know if they're planning to do that this year or next year. I'm just saying, those are some things that I think we need to take some, some time and look into.
Well, like I said, I don't want to be the last community to have an ordinance in place, because it's just going to open up more and more opportunities for others. So I think sooner than later is in the best interest of our community.
I agree. I think something sooner than later is better. I think a few regulations would be suggested, but not too many, because that, again, leads enforcement issues. So we'll never make everybody happy, and I'll tell you that right now. So... Yes.
I will add that, kind of what I've said before, and other issues as well. I sincerely want to get it right. I think we all do. The good thing is, we can come back and change it if we need to. And so I don't want to, you know, I'd like to get it right the first time, but I don't want to do analysis paralysis and not do anything.
Right. Right.
You know, if we find that what we put in place isn't working, then we can change it.
And I would just caution, if we go down the regulatory route, that we keep it simple and not have a list of a billion things that you can't do, because I think that's an enforcement thing. And whenever you start listing things that people ignore anyway, it breeds contempt for the law.
Sure.
So I think keeping it simple, if you have to do that, is wise.
Okay. So do you want to give staff some kind of direction in terms of what you'd like to see? I think, I don't want to call it sunset, but what would be a better word?
Well, I think you're talking about a delayed implementation of when people could no longer rent, or would have to comply with the ordinance.
Okay, so let me ask you something. So how do we make it known that as of, let's say, next month, for instance, that, okay, now the clock is ticking, four months from now, you can no longer do this? I mean, it seems to me you have to let everybody know, rather than just saying, well, it's going to take place in, it should take place when we pass it.
Well, I, yes, I think there are two things. I think the ordinance would become effective immediately.
Okay.
In other words, it would become effective like everything else upon adoption and publication. But some parts of it, maybe the guts of it, wouldn't go into effect until some future date. I mean, I think you can parse those two things out, and December 31st or January 1st probably makes sense, given where we live and what the season is, because people are going to be renting primarily in the good weather, we think, and that would be kind of a cutoff. So we can, if that's what council wants, we can easily do that.
All right. Owner occupied, and somehow there has to be some kind of a proof, whatever? But, I mean, we'll have to figure that out. It has to be, they have to apply for a permit, because otherwise, how are we going to regulate it?
I thought, pardon if I'm wrong, but I thought we weren't going to get on the permitting path to answer your question about how.
Okay.
It'd be like every other ordinance. It's complaint-based.
Okay. All right.
That's what I'm thinking. I don't know.
Is that, I mean...
I guess are we, is this discussion for direction to bring back? Is that what we're doing? I guess there's consensus we're going to regulate.
To some extent, or tweak the ordinance that's at hand to incorporate these items that we're talking about.
Well, as you can see, Madam Mayor, I think there's a lot more time that's going to be needed to go through that. So my suggestion would be that to go ahead and if there's consensus on that, we've got some general direction, but go ahead and affirm that there's consensus that we are going to regulate these and we're not prohibiting them.
Right.
That's the question. The ordinance before you is prohibiting short-term rentals. And what you're talking about is regulating them. And so that is something different.
Well, correct.
I disagree with that.
I think the, I think what I'm hearing the majority say is, we want to prohibit them with a few exceptions.
Which is not the same as regulating them.
Which, I'm not sure, maybe it is.
Well, I mean, she's talking about licenses and...
I'm asking.
That's what I'm saying.
And that's not what I'm talking about. That's why we don't have consensus.
Hold on just a second. So Mr. Beatty is, the ordinance prohibiting them with a few exceptions, is that reg, I mean, is that...
Well, I was counting noses, and I thought there were three for prohibiting them and two for regulating. But I, I think, what I interpreted your statements as changing to say regulation. I mean, that list of conditions that you talked about.
I'm not, I don't even know if those are what the council wants. I guess I'm trying to get at how much they want to get into it.
But I guess my broader point, going back to the one I made earlier, those kinds of conditions, whether those be the exact ones or not, I think are part of a regulatory scheme, rather than a prohibition against it. And if that's not, it's, this is an ordinance, it's going to take three votes to adopt anything. So, you know, if three of you don't want to go down the regulatory path, instead want to prohibit them, then I think we're talking about a prohibition. And it may, it may be this ordinance, it may be something else. Again, I think you could lift the curtain a little bit and say, we're not going, there are certain types of this activity, certain minimal level of this activity that we're not going to regulate. That might be a way to carve a little bit out of that. But you basically have to decide whether you're prohibiting them or regulating them.
Well, what you just said, I think, is what we're kind of leaning towards.
With, basically, it's a ban with a carve-out, which I don't, when I think of regulatory, I think of what Dave was saying, you know, licensing permit and expressions and fees and that there. What I'm, what I'm thinking, and everyone else going in, of course, is a ban with a carve-out, which I don't look at as a regulatory.
Exceptions.
Well, yeah, I mean, what you're saying, that is, if people qualified for the exception, they wouldn't be covered, and anybody else would be, would be prohibited. There would be no licensing.
That's correct.
Correct.
You know, and I guess, and again, that's an approach that you can take. I think what you need to recognize is that, one of the first comments that we talked about was the thrust of this ordinance is to say that not only are these things illegal going forward, but they've never been legal.
Correct.
If you start allowing some subset of these to happen, I think you're going to be declaring that that group is a permitted use.
Okay, come again. Say that again.
Well, in other words, if you...
So you're saying if, like, let's say we said homeowner occupied is allowed.
Yeah, or no more than three times a year, or something like that. You're carving out an exception, and I think, talk, you know, we talked about, you can go back and fix it later on. Once, once you allow that, though, what you're determining in the ordinance is that that, whatever that is, whatever you're describing, is permitted.
Right.
And so later, if you decide that you don't like that, you are going to confront a non-conforming issue, because you've allowed, however briefly, a certain subset to do it. Just recognize that.
But then you still have the option to grandfather those in.
You'd have to. You'd have to. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what he's saying. So, so I do think we need to be careful. And that's kind of why I'm saying we have to have something concrete that really ties the property to the owner, and the owner lives there, and that's how we'd have to do it, if that's what you'd like. So those are the two stipulations that I'm hearing. Is there anything else?
I have one question. I don't know how to explain this, but I'm going to use Sandy as an example. Sorry, Sandy, because your point was very valid when I met with you. Sandy had a concern with it being a 30-day rental. How many people will rent a property?
How many people will rent a property for thirty days? That's very expensive. So Sandy also said, "But then I don't want to be away from my home for thirty days either." So is there a way, and this just might be more confusing, of saying, maybe Sandy would, uh, you know, only run to one party for one week, two weeks, three weeks, or whatever, but only within that thirty-day period. It could be one party, whether it's for one weekend or for all thirty days. It was just the one party. So you don't have all these people coming and going in thirty days, you would just have that one party. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand the concept. I mean, that is another way, I think, of saying, uh, you might want to limit the number of rentals on an annual basis. I mean, if you think about what you're saying is, one per month, whether they stay for a weekend or thirty days, one per month. And so if you took that concept and said, you know, a minimal amount of, or minimal level of activity is, can't rent more than four times a year, or whatever number you come up with, I think you're getting at the same, same issue.
I, I like that idea, because it allows the homeowners some flexibility, and they, they're not tied to thirty days, because it, it is difficult to find renters for thirty days, and most of these people are renting them for, for weeks.
And I think that, too, the neighbors, how happy would they be? You know, if you have somebody for a week and have three weeks of nobody there, or, you know, the owner, who's going to complain about that?
I guess my concern about that is subleasing. I mean, you can get on that point easy.
Doesn't, doesn't the, um, ordinance prohibit subleasing? Maybe it could.
Well, again, you know, as several of you have said, the more complicated you make this, the more, uh, difficult it's going to be to enforce this.
Okay, for some reason or another, I just thought, uh, subleasing was... Well, it wouldn't, because it has to be owner occupied.
Well, that doesn't prohibit the subleasing.
What do you mean?
I mean, you can, you can, you can still say, as an owner, "I'm going to lease to you for thirty days, and you can turn around at least to fifteen other people, or three days beyond that." Preach, for three days at a time.
How often does that happen?
Well, it doesn't happen now, because it doesn't need to. That's my point. If, if you put this kind of restriction, then that, that, you're talking about unintended consequences, that could be one of them.
Yeah. I'm, I'm curious, how many of the, what the council feels about the definition of short-term being changed to seven days instead of thirty?
But then you're opening it up for every weekend. You know, because that's, that's, um, seven days, I mean, you know, somebody comes in on Friday and they leave on, on... Whatever, they, they lease it for seven days, but then the next weekend, they're, they're, a different person is there, too.
Oh, I realize that.
Yeah. So, I don't think you're getting at the problem, because a lot of people want to rent it just for the weekend.
But you couldn't, if, if short-term was defined as seven days, you couldn't rent it just for a weekend.
They could come for, you know, what I'm saying, though, is, you would have, you could have four renters in there in one, one month.
Right. I, I'm, I'm thinking about changing the definition to seven days, and then ma- imposing a limit on how often that can happen each month, maybe once a month, or a certain number of times per year.
I think it's more complicated than that.
It might get more complicated, but that would be the only way to do it, then.
And how are we going to track that?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, how are you going to track anything?
Well, then, how do we track whether it's a problem or not? I mean, that's...
Exactly.
Right, so you never answer your question, because you can never track if it's a problem.
So... Well, so far, what I'm hearing is that, um, we'd like the ordinance to specifically say that it has to be owner o-, that it's prohibited with the exception of owner occupied. I, I don't know that we're going to limit it to se- or go to seven days. I think that just gets a little more complicated.
The end date also.
And the end date, and the end date.
But the implementation hit?
Yep.
So... So we'll bring it back? I mean, is that enough? There won't be any other public comments at our next meeting? We'll be bringing it back? And...
And I'm not sure if, if it's an "it" or a "them" back, because, I mean, I, I'm hearing, frankly, different approaches. And, you know, we're, we're, staff is sitting here trying to absorb this as well.
What do you need?
Well, um, I would like three of you to definitively say regulation or, or prohibition, but I'm not su-, I, I think enough people are conflicted about that.
Okay.
But I'm not sure if I'm going to get that, and that's why I'm saying, they're, I'm probably going to regret this, but I, it may be that more than one ordinance needs to be produced, so that you can look at it. I don't think this is going to be re- uh, I don't, I'm not sure if we can bring this back in two weeks. It may be four weeks.
Okay, that, at four weeks, okay. Well, okay, so I'm confused, because I think what we're saying is prohibition with some minor exceptions.
All right, well, if that's...
Is that, is it, with the exception of if it's owner occupied? And we'll have to define that and make sure that we, everybody clearly understands that, and that there's some kind of a, um, end date for those that are currently operating.
Okay, I mean, if, if that's, if that's the approach, then that's simpler, because that's one ordinance, and it is not a regulatory scheme.
Is that what...
That's what I'm comfortable with.
Okay.
Out of all the permitations.
It's as simple as we can get.
And I'm not, I'm against that.
And Mike, Mr. Malloy?
So, we were, just to clarify, we are talking about a prohibition of anything less than thirty days unless it's owner occupied. Is that what I, is that what I heard?
And, and that's what we'd have to define.
Yeah. Let's not get involved in that.
Yeah. No, we're not. This is a city council meeting, and we are discussing this. And this is, this is our time to discuss it and get information from, from our staff.
If that's the case, what we want to go, then I would be comfortable with that, yes.
Okay, say that again now?
If, if we were going to go down the approach of a prohibition of thirty days or less, with the exception of owner occupied, I'm comfortable exploring that. Exploring it, and see what it comes back as.
Okay.
We'll bring, we'll bring back...
I agree with that as well. Okay, so we have, we have the majority that says that they would like to, so keep this as is and bring back the other one?
Bring back something else that we'll try to incop- uh, incorporate or accommodate the things that we've heard, and run it up the flagpole, and see if that's what, what you want.
Thank you, all right. All right, so with that, that concludes, um, the ordinance, so we'll move on to the next business item, and that is a... I'm going to take a break, because we are running two minutes to our nine o'clock time, which we have to take a break anyway. So we're going to take a five-minute break and be back with the CUP and variance for the solar panels. All right. We are going to continue our meeting here. So if everybody could please take their seats, we have a number of other items.
Gary, take your seat.
Or Patty's, Patty's turned it on.
She's, she'll be right in.
We'll just wait a couple more minutes, because, yeah, we do need Chris here, her, her... Okay, so next, uh, business item is a conditional use permit and a variance for solar panels at seventy ninety-one Halsted Drive. First, we're going to discuss the variance for the solar panels, and then we'll talk about the c- conditional use permit. So, um, David, maybe you could...
Sure, I can give you a brief overview, Madam Mayor and Council. So as, as you stated, the applicant has applied for a conditional use permit for ground-mown energy solar system, along with a variance from the required seventy-five-foot lake shore setback. Uh, they're looking at going at twenty-point-four feet from the lakeshore. As you mentioned, Madam Mayor, the property is at seventy-one, ninety-one Halsted Drive. As the council knows, conditional use permits are required for ground-mown and solar systems in the agricultural district. That's where this property is, is located. The, uh, the caveat to ground-moun- mounted solar sys- uh, systems are that they must meet structural setbacks of that zoning district, and as I mentioned, in this case, it would be a seventy-five-foot setback from the OHW, given it's on Lake Matanka. The applicant is seeking the variance to twenty-point-four feet. The lot is heavily wooded, uh, and, but it is facing south, so that is good in terms of having sunlight opportunities, but it's heavily wooded, so there, there is some negative to there in limitations to where you can put it because of all the foliage that, that you experience on the property. Excuse me. The planning commission, uh, did review this request, uh, at their April meeting. What they ended up doing is recommending six to one to recommend approval of the conditional use permit, so they're okay. Again, we do allow ground-mown and solar, uh, panels in this district with a conditional use permit, so they're okay with the idea of ground-mown and solar. The concern they have was the variance request, uh, and the proximity of the structure to the lakeshore, that it being too close. They also thought that the, the variance could alter the character of the neighborhood, given, given its location, so they did recommend denial of the variance request with a seven to zero vote. Uh, the minutes from that meeting, along with the written comments that were submitted, uh, for this item are included in your packet this evening. Um, as, as mentioned, Madam Mayor, um, I would suggest, uh, discussing the variance issue first and making a, a decision on that as you proceed with the, the two items before you this evening.
So if the variance is not approved, then the CUP would not be needed?
Correct, that is correct, Madam Mayor. So essentially, if, if you do not pass the variance, our recommendation would be to also, um, deny the CUP request.
Or would the applicant just withdraw the request?
That would be an option for them, they could withdraw it, um, if they want to come back, um, with a different proposal, showing it conforming, or, again, it depends upon what the council does with, with the variance request.
Okay.
So there's different options there that we can discuss, depending upon what, where you go.
And the conditional use permit is strictly and only for the solar panels?
That is correct.
So it wouldn't apply or be pertinent to any other use, or they can't take that conditional use permit and use it for anything else?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So, questions?
Yeah, I have a question. On page one sixty-five? Just somewhere around there. Where's my count off? Yeah, that one. The setback, um, point closest to there is twenty-point-four, that's what the variance is asked for. She has room to the left, although this shows ten-point-six to the property line, and it didn't look like ten-point-six to me when I was there, so... If there was a possibility of moving the solar panels to the left, that now changes that twenty-point-four to, I don't know if that logically comes out to be thirty-point-four, but the planning commission had said four to three against... Or no, it was, that was something else. But they said they would be interested in if she could get it back to thirty-five. Well, if you move it to the left, you're getting close to the thirty-five, and secondly, there's cedar trees right behind it. If it's moved further to the left, it blocks the view of the concerned neighbors even more. So the concern would be, then we're probably looking for a different variance, or maybe we're looking for two variances, I don't know. There was also an issue of reflection across the lake. I don't see that as being an issue. Solar panels don't reflect, as far as my understanding and my reading on them. Uh, I guess there's also the possibility of dropping it down, in that one end is eight feet up, and then the panels are slanted, so they're thirteen feet up. So you could actually drop it down a little bit more, although I think the intent from Patty is to continue to garden underneath, which, you get it too low, going to have a trouble gardening, and of course, you could put shade-tolerant plants under there, because that's what it is, it's the garden is where she's putting it. So I guess what I'm getting at, I think I would be comfortable, the planning commission was not, but I think I would be comfortable if it could be moved to the left, because it would achieve some of the concerns that the neighbors had, and some that the planning commission had, because we feel it's too close to the lake. Now, I know there also is a neighbor that was concerned about the possible setting a precedent of having this solar panel out here, and as we know, variances are... That variance is, I mean, if the neighbor across the street comes back with another variance, it has nothing to do with this one. Variances are on their own, so this doesn't set any principle or any pattern, in my mind, at all.
Except for if the neighboring property wants to put a forty-five-foot by thirteen-foot screen house on their property twenty feet from the lake, are you going to say yes?
I'd take it on its own merit, I'd have to see how it sits.
Yeah, you have, I know, you have to be careful. You have to be careful, but, um, yeah.
So are you suggesting that it come down and then over, or just over?
Just over.
That's only ten feet, and then it would be on the property line.
It'd be on the property line, and I don't, when I looked at the marker that was there, I didn't think it was ten feet, but, I mean, that was a possibility, that would put it behind those cedars even more. It's partially blocked now, if you moved it down a little bit, it would be much more blocked. And of course, cedars, as you know, are green year-round, so it's not like it's going to lose its leaves, and the neighbors are going to see them. Also, where it sits, it does have full southern exposure. If we force it to be moved back, one, you're going to take down trees, and you're going to lose some of the, in my non-professional opinion, you're going to lose some of the capability of those panels.
Um, if they moved, um, I know Patty was looking for a twenty-foot, or the owner was looking for a twenty-foot setback, and the planning commission recommended a thirty-five, is that right?
They talked about a thirty-five. I mean, I don't know if there was general consensus, there was willingness. That wasn't included as part of the motion. That was a discussion after the motion was made, that there are a couple of the commissioners would be more open to it if it was moved back to thirty-five. I, we're not exactly sure where the thirty-five came from, um, but it sounds like, with talking to the applicant, I mean, you know, either way, if she moves it thirty-five, or she moves it back to seventy-five, she's just got to lose trees, either way.
Well, I was just, um, wondering, if, even if they did go up to thirty-five, would that make a difference in the view from the, um, neighbor?
It doesn't sound like it, because it sounds like the trees that are majorly going to screen it at its proposed location would have to be cut down if you moved it to thirty-five feet.
So thirty-five feet would not answer.
It doesn't do anything.
It wouldn't make a difference, the neighbor, it wouldn't make a difference to the neighbor. It would make a difference to Patty, because of her trees, right. Does the applicant have, want to weigh in or say anything?
Uh, I'm back in Fort Hornet, Western Road, St. Parker. I'm the contractor that proposed this for Patty, actually, who proposed this a hundred years ago, actually. Uh, it's just recently come up, um, where, you know, you guys are going to allow it.
Right.
So, you know, Patty is obviously very into this idea, you know, she has, her neighbors just cut down two hundred-one trees, so she, her goal is to kind of replace those trees with a renewable energy technology. So, the solar pergola, it is, it's her dream, I guess, to have the pergola, uh, as kind of a shade structure for a garden, so she can continue to grow, uh, plants, raspberries, berries, whatever. And I advise them to, kind of blend it in with the natural environment. Solar is, well, it's good for the environment, so, uh, everybody... If you have an objection to solar, I guess, yeah, not with nature. If you have an objection to solar, I guess, being not with nature, I guess, is kind of, can be looked at as, you know. You know, moving the, they recommended thirty-five feet.
Well, they didn't recommend that, that's, that's.
Because of work schedules, so employees are currently compensated at straight times for meetings and shoots for a minimum of three hours. Language was adjusted to reflect trainings instead of shoots, so just to clean up. And reflect that supervisors receive overtime, which is time and a half, for meetings and trainings that are outside of their regularly scheduled forty hours of the week, or on a day off. So standard compensation there. Article thirteen is recall to duty, an employee who is recalled to duty during the employee's scheduled time off shall receive a minimum of three hours of pay. This was two, at one and a half times the base rate, so you're just looking for an extension of three. This is what we've done with our other contracts as well, this time around. Article fourteen is insurance, so for twenty eighteen, the employer will contribute monies based on the following tiers, employee nine hundred, employee and child, or employee and spouse, twelve hundred, and family fifteen hundred. Again, there'll be an insurance reopeners for twenty nineteen and twenty. There was a flat contribution in twenty seventeen of eleven hundred. So this too reads the exact same as it is on our other two contracts that we've addressed for this coming year, for twenty eighteen. Uniforms under article fifteen point two, the employees shall now be allocated up to five hundred and fifty dollars for three-year term of the contract, so that's the entire life of the contract. This allowance is based on a hundred and eighty-three thirty-three on average per year. The previous allowance was four hundred and fifty dollars, so an increase of a hundred dollars for three staff members over the course of three years. Standby in court time, article twenty point two, an employee required to appear in court during scheduled off-duty time shall receive a minimum of three hours of pay at one-half times the employee's base rate. An increase from two and one-half hours pay at the one-half, so it's a difference of a half an hour of minimum time that they're paid at halftime. Merit pay, as we discussed in our other two contracts this year, is something that we haven't implemented in many years. That would be removed from the contract, just to get things cleaned up. Article twenty-one is wages, I'm sorry, that should say supervisors, I apologize. Supervisors will receive a two point five percent wage increase in twenty eighteen over twenty seventeen, a three point oh wage increase in twenty nineteen over twenty eighteen, and a three point five wage increase in twenty twenty over twenty nineteen. And again, the duration would be from twenty eighteen, and it would remain in full force and effect until December thirty-first of twenty twenty. So that would put us in retro, obviously, back to the beginning of the year. So the personnel committee recommends to the city council to approve resolution seventy-eight eighteen, authorizing the execution of the proposed labor agreement with LELS Local Three Forty-Three for a period of three years, January first twenty eighteen through December thirty-first of twenty twenty. And I'll answer any questions.
The only thing you'd talk about, again, would be the insurance, right, at the end of the year?
Correct, yep, so there'd be a reopeners for twenty nineteen and then a reopeners again for twenty twenty, because we do have to go out to bed every year now as a small group entity.
Can you define exactly what reopeners means?
It means that we will reopen the contract, that section only of the contract, so the exact same as what we discussed with the other two contracts. We would just reopen this portion of the contract for monies that would be allocated towards insurance.
So we wouldn't be passing a new contract?
Correct.
You'd be amending this one?
Correct.
They don't change rates of payment or any other?
Yes, nothing else is open for negotiation during that time period. That's a good question.
Any other questions? Okay, good. Then I need a motion to accept and approve the Local Three Forty-Three Police Supervisors Union Contract for twenty eighteen through twenty twenty. So moved. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Mortensen made that motion, and Mr. Malator seconded that. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye, all those opposed, motion passes five oh. So next, we have approve our pavement management work plan and roadway capital improvement plan.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The pavement management work plan and the roadway capital improvement plan are essentially the same as you saw previously. We did go out at council, with council authorization and did some coring in the Hunter's Crest development and also in the Turtle Creek neighborhood. The cores of those roadways do identify the roadways being suitable for mill and overlay, at least in Hunter's Crest, and some of those in Turtle Creek being suitable for a seal coat. So the memo that I have is essentially similar to the one you saw before. The capital improvement plan that I presented to the council previously with the Hunter's Court, Fenter, Pheasant Crossing, and Glacier Court added to the twenty eighteen CIP for mill and overlay. Those were added in twenty, for twenty eighteen, and the rest of the, that's how it was modified when we previously saw it. And so we essentially made no changes to that CIP.
From what we discussed at the last, yeah.
The cores were good for that application, and stat does recommend council approve resolution seventy-nine dash eighteen to accept the pavement management work plan and the twenty eighteen twenty-two, twenty twenty-two roadway capital improvement plan with any modifications that you elect to make. One thing to keep in mind is that the capital improvement plans are fluid, we look at them every year, and these, just because you approve it now, we'll establish twenty eighteen projects that serve as fluid for twenty nineteen through then twenty twenty-three.
So with this, we haven't even authorized the, authorizing the specifications and the plans and all that for the twenty eighteen projects, so.
Correct, that would be next.
At the next meeting?
Yes.
You don't say that very convincingly.
Well, actually, we're actually working on a work plan, a proposal for that now.
So are we gonna be able to get the bids out?
Yeah, our goal for that would still be to, with the items that are in twenty eighteen, is to have that work done primarily when school is out of session. So it'd be done before the end of August.
Okay, I'm gonna hold you to it.
I just wanted to say, on page one ninety-eight, under fiscal impact, it says a five-year budget that council previously approved. We don't approve five-year budgets.
You approve the budgets for the capital improvement plan, and that is laid out in the pavement management plan.
But that's a plan, that's not a budget. We approve a budget each year.
You approve the budget each year, but you set up, the capital improvement plan is laid out on a five-year basis, based on the budget that was set by the council as a recommendation of the road plan. So for this year, it's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're actually a little under that. The next year was about four hundred and fifty thousand, next year was five hundred and fifty thousand, roughly.
It probably is more, it is probably better wording to say it's a five-year work plan. Our budget's only been approved for twenty eighteen, so yeah, I would agree with that, that it's five-year work plan, you know, or planning document, or yeah.
And I always said that because we have a new council member here, and I just, it's a plan, it's not a budget, because it implies that we've already approved the money and spending the money, and we don't.
And nothing's been approved beyond twenty eighteen, I mean, obviously, twenty nineteen.
The numbers are just there to, to give us an idea of what we can do, I mean, that's.
We're not approving.
Without that, you wouldn't know.
Right.
You wouldn't have a five-year plan.
Right, it's a work plan, yeah.
So however you want to word it, I thought it was implied, but that's fine.
So I'm okay with this, I'm just gonna make a couple of comments, but this year, I do want to talk about a couple things sooner than later. So we had Mr. Fish here at one of our work sessions, and I took it upon myself to go out and drive some of the local roads. And I did drive the Lakeview Road and Margaret Circle and Shady, and I can tell you, it is in, I mean, it's horrible shape, it's just horrible shape. And then I also drove Loring, and that's in horrible shape. I mean, it's like, I'm going like this to try and maneuver around these huge, I mean, anyway. So I think we have to have some, and then I look at our plan, and our plan doesn't even have Lakeview or Shady or those in the next five years. I mean, they're, they're not even there. So even if they were, except they're down, I think, in the seventh year or something like that, and if we wait until five or six or seven more years, they're no longer gonna be mill and overlay, because that's what they were, they're gonna be, they're gonna be reconstructed. So I think this year, we have to take a look at this and say, is that acceptable? And if not, how are we going to do this? Because this is a lot of money, and our, some of these roads are so, I mean, crumbling, and people are asking us to fix them. So we have to, we have to look at that. And so anyway, that's just a comment, and I want to look at it sooner than later.
I certainly agree with you. I think it's part of that we need to have our discussion about assessment policy, to make sure that
Right.
we are trying to simply disassociating that with the bonding, and it's using that as a possible tool to get us further and faster.
And that'll be at the next work session, I mean, it was on the assessment policy discussion you referenced was gonna be at the work session tonight, and it got moved to the, so it'll be a good lead and segue into budgeting and.
So it wasn't just, because we didn't have any materials, it was just an agenda topic, I didn't say any.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a PowerPoint, yes.
Can we get that beforehand in our packet?
That's fine.
Assessment?
Yeah.
It's the current, the PowerPoint.
The PowerPoint that was presented.
Because when I saw the bullet point, it's been a while now, I thought it was just an MSA discussion.
That's, it does say just, yeah, special assessment policy, right? And we're probably gonna need a full.
Yeah, let's not cheat ourselves on that.
Yeah.
That could be a full topic for next time, or pretty much that.
And then, yeah, and decide when to bring Miles back for the water system, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like to make a comment about the budget versus what we are kind of proving for right now. We approved a budget of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What we're proposing is three hundred and thirty. So we've got so many that we're not using, and, you know, I took some hate for the bud, the taxes, even though I feel that they were fair and everything else. But I would like to see at least the roads to get to the budget that we fought to get the taxpayers to agree on, or.
To fund.
To fund. So if we're gonna cut anywhere, I don't think roads is the place to do it.
I don't think we're really cutting, I think we're doing what's feasible to do this here, based on, we've had multiple discussions on seal coating and what can be ready by Public Works for patching, and what's ready for mill and overlay. And I think by doing three hundred and thirty thousand, sometimes projects go over a little bit too, so if you have a little bit.
Gives us a little wiggle room.
If you have a little bit of wiggle room, I don't think we're cheating the taxpayers or the residents by, I think if anything, we're being a little prudent by not budgeting, or going right up to the three fifty or three fifty-five, and then all of a sudden the bids come in and it's three eighty or something, and it's, whoa, we're thirty thousand over budget, or.
But we can apply that next year too.
Yeah, I mean, and it's not so many lost.
I brought up the same point.
Yes, you did.
And I think, if I'm looking at the fund page, it's on page twelve of our packet, I assume that if we spend three thirty, and to your point, Brian, it won't be three thirty, it'll be some other number, whatever it is, that if there is an excess, meaning not using the full three fifty, that it would show up, I don't know if it shows up in Fund Four Oh Six or Four Ninety-Nine?
Four Oh Six, yeah.
Four Oh Six.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think you had some concern, Brian, about that currently being at eighty-five as being a bit low.
Yeah, correct, yeah, because we just got some of our state aid money, or back in earlier in the year, and then now we're gonna, you know, obviously spend that plus the tax levy, you know, down for, yeah, we, our fund balance, you'll see when the audit comes, was at the year end was five, ten thousand or something to that.
So this reflects now state aid money coming in?
Yeah, yeah, so, that's why it's a little higher cash balance.
Yeah, I guess, Pam, to your point, you know, obviously, I share that same concern, but I also understand the prudent factor here of, you know, we don't want to go over. So as long as that money is earmarked here for maintenance fund next year, I'm okay with that.
It'll stay right within that fund, yeah.
It'll stay within the fund, and that gives us a number, you know, if we decide, because what I'm thinking about is next year, we decide that we take on one of the reclamation projects, and we decide to assess, hopefully that's what we do, but, never mind that. But if we decide to assess and that we're gonna pay the city half without bonding, we may need to tap into some of that to avoid bonding, so.
Yeah, we'll, obviously, we'll be looking at all of that.
Yeah, I don't know, I didn't go through the rest of the list, I'm not sure if we can cherry pick out something for twenty grand that would fit in the list.
I think, I think we want a little wiggle room, plus I think Gary and his crew have to have enough time to do their stuff, and I think that was also taken into consideration. Because they have to do patching and whatever, you know?
Yeah.
And before the seal coat can go down too, so I think there's that time element as well, but, good point, yeah, good point. So any other questions or comments regarding the pavement management work plan and not budget? All right, so is there a motion to approve the pavement management work plan and roadway capital improvement plan? So moved. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, a motion has been made and seconded. Ms. Mortensen made the motion, and Mr. Malator seconded. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. So next, we move on to our professional service agreement for an INI reduction project.
Mayor, members of the council, in your package memorandum discussing the cities that he's passed with the, with the INI program. So the influence infiltration, what, if you're not familiar with that, what we do is we're on a, the city has been on a program, and it's been reinitiated this year is to reduce the amount of groundwater infiltration into the sanitary sewer system, and also surface water entering the sanitary sewer system. The city of Minutrist has been proactive in the past in doing some of these INI projects. Typically, we, every construction project we have, we put seals around the lids of the manholes so that surface water can't infiltrate at the top of the manhole. And these types, the types of projects we're looking at here would be for lining sewer pipe and also for grouting manhole structures. And so what this does is helps keep the groundwater out of the system. The reason we do this is that, that clear water, that groundwater, surface water that's going down in your sanitary sewer system, the city's customers are paying that rate to treat that water, and so that's reflected in your charges from Met Council. Met Council also has a number of cities that identify for wastewater surcharge, because they've been identified as having excessive INI. Minutrist is not on that list, but what Met Council's been doing is putting a surcharge on your wastewater fees for those communities that are on that list. And then they set those dollars aside, and then they bring out a grant program where they use those dollars to pay back cities that are doing INI improvements.
Okay, that's not what, see, I was gonna ask you about that, because it was unclear in our packet. It almost looks like the surcharge fees are set aside, but then the communities that don't meet the INI requirement get to get those monies.
No.
And I thought, that doesn't seem right.
That's what I thought too. No, I'm sorry, it's slated for those that paid in the surcharge.
It is.
So the cities who pay that surcharge, they have the opportunity to get those dollars back.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, is not right, because we do our, we do diligence so that we reduce our INI, and then we don't get those funds, we should be getting those funds.
You don't get a surcharge.
I understand what he's saying, and I agree with your point, but I don't think it's something we're gonna solve here.
I know, that's okay.
So what the Met Council does, they set, they penalize the cities who have excessive INI, set some money aside, and say, you might get the opportunity to put that, get some of that money back if you do improvements. So that's how they're trying to make cities do those improvements, so they get those dollars back in a grant form. So you do your improvements, you're not on the list, that's a good thing.
That's a good thing, I know, but we should still get a grant.
But it's a bad thing, because then we don't get to apply for the money that we paid in, so.
We didn't pay in, we don't pay in.
You didn't pay in.
No, but let's just say we let it go, we didn't do anything, we got on the, we got on the bad list, right? Well, then we could get, we could get funded, which would be funded by a bunch of other cities.
And so one of the things that I noticed in the, two years ago, when we did a project, not for this community, we applied for about twenty-five thousand dollars in reimbursement and the grant. So many cities did projects that year that expended dollars, we got about twelve or fifteen thousand dollars back. Well, so many cities did projects that year that expended the dollars, we got about twelve or fifteen thousand dollars back. So I don't think there's a guarantee that the surcharge you paid in, if you're on that list, that you're going to get that back.
Right.
It's better to be doing this proactively than it is.
Uh, no, I understand, it just, yeah, okay.
So also in the, in the, um, uh, in the memorandum, it identifies the areas that, um, we're looking at cured-in-place pipe lining. These are both, uh, full-length pipe linings and also, um, some, uh, short liners. So a short liner is we have an area that's a short segment where maybe there's a cracked pipe where there's water coming through. We'll put a short liner in there, eight to ten feet long, and cure that in place rather than lining the whole pipe. Some of the other pipes have a number of issues along the length of them. It's actually cheaper to line the whole pipe than it is to put in several short liners. So, um, just because of the setup time, the time it takes to do that, it's cheaper to do it as, as the whole pipe. And then there is also a spot repair that we have, and that spot repair is down, uh, at Minneapolis Avenue. Um, there's a sanitary sewer just east of the lift station down there that is in a partial collapse. And that needs to be excavated and replaced. There's not any other way around that, and that is a line that takes, um, the red oak area into that, into that system in Grandview Avenue. So that would be included in this. We plan to go out for quotes for this project. We're seeing that this project estimates are coming in under a hundred thousand dollars in construction values. So we're planning to go offer quotes for companies that do this lining work. Um, and we'll do, we'll send it out to contractors that do the excavation too, that could probably be either one of them. Although the lining is the greater share of the cost as we're seeing it. Uh, so we do have a, um, proposal that is, um, for the preparation of plans and specs. That cost is, uh, proposed to be sixty-nine hundred dollars on an hourly, not to exceed basis. Construction observation administration services is on an hourly basis estimated to be nine thousand dollars. I try to be conservative on that because some cities want a person there one hundred percent of the time while the lining is going in. It's kind of like watching, uh, directionally drilling about three thousand foot water main. You see the pipe move about that far every, you know, few seconds and it goes very slow and it's not necessary. So we, I would look at having someone out there part-time and I would anticipate the cost being less than that. Um, there is a, there is a, um, uh, resolution eighty dash eighteen in the packet that accepts a professional service proposal for the twenty eighteen inflow infiltration reduction improvements, that's City Project zero three dash eighteen, and authorizing the preparation of plans and specifications. Uh, once we get the quotes back, we'll bring those back to the council. And then the council has a decision either to accept the quotes or, or reject them. And of course, at that point, you, you wouldn't have concerns and services associated with it, so. And the resolutions in your packet.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Their proposal says that we actively televise sanitary sewer systems?
Oh, so if, um, yes.
Yes, we do.
Public Works.
That ought to be interesting.
They actually ported my driveway last year and they, and I was home and, um, the guy brought me in the truck and I watched the camera go down three or four houses and he told me all about this stuff, so. So yes, they did.
You can find interesting things down there.
I bet.
Actually, it wasn't nearly as interesting as I thought it was going to be.
On occasion.
Several hours long.
Any, any other questions?
I actually did have a question. Um, with the list of projects that we have here, um, you kind of, the thing, the thought goes through my head is, is what do we have, pardon the pun, but in the pipeline of projects like this? I, do we, I, I think about our streets, right? We've got a whole, we've got our plan, we've got all that stuff going on. From a sewer perspective, from an INI perspective, do we have the same kind of list where like, okay, we got to pick off X number, just kind of our backlog, our, our priorities, how do we align on this, I guess?
So we're on a, a five-year program to televise the whole system. So in a five-year program, we run through and, 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 uh, our vendor also provides a written report. It's very easy for us to go down and see where they may have, may have problems and make them and watch the tape or the report, the video, just to see what we're looking at. So in those five years, you know, we may see an area that is a problem and address it like we are here. Uh, some others may develop. So would this be the last time we're in this, in either of these areas? Maybe not. Um, but it's a continual program that we go through. Is there a, um, priority list like, um, our pavement management time, we've got this huge list of, you know? But, so in this case, we're trying to knock off the ones that we see as a priority. And, and so what ends up happening on these, Gary, Gary gets to watch a lot of movies. And he sends them, then he ma, then he makes a lot of notes for us and then we watch a lot of movies. And then, uh, um, prepare the plans to get them ready for recording. So it's a lot of time and effort that goes into it. Um, so we're trying to be selective in what we can repair within the budget.
And if I may, this is a two-year, two thousand sixteen did not have enough for INI to even think about doing it. So when they did the next years for two thousand seventeen, last year, that's where we found more issues. So we've combined the two years to make it actually worthwhile to do. Um, we do it in, it's, uh, there's three sections in the city that we do. We divide it down into four, so it's been, I think it was last, um, two thousand eight, nine, ten?
Ten, I think it was ten.
Ten was the last time, so now we're on this second one. We have one more section I found to do that will be updated again, so we'll see next year. But we didn't want to wait another year. We have enough now to take care of the issue now that come through there. And I don't know when was the last time that, something, we used the INI money out of the fund. I don't think we've used it for this or in a while.
It's been a few years, yeah, so.
Right, I think we just, we use a little bit of it for the mill and overlay for the, for the manhole seals.
Okay, so any other questions? Otherwise, um, is there a motion to approve professional services agreement for the INI reduction project?
So move.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Bruce made that motion and Mr. Trumplin seconded. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So service agreement for the municipal state aid system traffic counting.
Mayor members of the council.
We probably would have found out, I'm sorry, we probably would have found out a little bit about this had we had our MSA one oh one.
It was, it was good timing.
Yeah.
At this meeting, but, um, as a municipal state aid city, the city is required to do traffic counts on their state aid system. This is a four-year process now. Um, it used to be a two-year system, so a two-year cycle. So now Mindot has it on a four-year cycle, Minnetrista's on the list to do this this year. Well, the purpose for these traffic counts is Mindot takes that data and then they plug it into their metro model for the, so they keep their traffic analysis up to date. Um, there are fourteen locations that are required to be counted on the state aid syst, on Minnetrista's state aid system. Uh, the cost for each setup is a hundred dollars per count location. However, one thing that Mindot recommends is to provide a budget for twenty percent overrun. And the reason for that is because oftentimes this happened, um, trying to think which, which road this happened on, I want, I want to say it was Hallstead, but they didn't like what the, the count was because it was out of the norm in the change they expected to see in the model. So what we did was we did the same thing. Say, okay, well, maybe that's correct and then we add their own factors to it. But that's what, primarily why the recounts occurs because they see something in, in the counts that were done that are outside the norm. We try to avoid doing counts where we have a construction project that, that's going to significantly impact the route. Uh, so for instance, this count probably wouldn't happen until the fall and school's in session because we want to have Hallstead Drive done, you know, rather than that. Right, we'll have to look at what the Met Council project is doing and how that might be impacting that as well. But, um, Hallstead might be one that might shoot us out of the norm on some of the traffic counts. I think that would be somewhere around seven hundred vehicles a day. Uh, I think that's the projected, actually. So the traffic counts are, um, are required and the part, most cities will go through and use their, um, state aid maintenance dollars to cover the cost on those. But I think for Minnetrista, that just goes into the roadway fund. And that's used out of the roadway maintenance fund to refund these kinds of things. So we recommend that, uh, that City Council approve the resolution number eighty-one dash eighteen, accept a proposal for professional services with a budget not to exceed seventeen hundred dollars.
And FYI to the council, this is a dollar amount that's under, um, the amount where I could have just approved this administratively, but I asked Paul to include this in the packet for a couple of reasons. One, at least you know about that we have to do this every, you know, four years. And two, just to see the, the, the kind of the outcome and the whys we're doing. And, and Evan probably would have got a question at the next meeting, is what's this seventeen hundred bucks for? So, um, that's what.
Okay, so Mindot, um, requires this. But Mindot doesn't do any repairs on our roads. They only do county roads or the, um.
Town highway system.
Right.
But.
And the interstate.
They, we do get MSA.
We get dollars, yeah.
So, yeah, so the, so these, you're only required to do this because you're a state aid city. If you were not, you wouldn't have to do this.
We wouldn't have to do it, right.
But you also wouldn't be at about four hundred and forty thousand a year.
Right.
Funding.
It's kind of the cost of admission, yes.
Right, yeah.
Is there someplace where I could see a copy of the fourteen roads? Is there a city map or?
I can, I can send a map of those locations. Frankly, I thought I just put it in there.
They're not city roads, yeah, they're city MSA roads.
MSA roads.
Right. Do we only have fourteen? Do we have fourteen?
So when I, when I went through, there was about twenty-four places I'd probably get a traffic count. But there's only fourteen places we're required to count.
Okay.
Mindot tells us where they want the counts on their state aid.
All right.
So, and yes, if the council would like, I can send a council map of those locations.
Sure, yeah. And then again, we didn't get to the MSA one oh one, so we'll get to that next time and then some of this might make a little more sense.
Do these results influence the, uh, speed?
No, they're not speed counts, it's just volume.
Okay. Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, speed counts take a little more time and effort.
Yeah, costs more money.
Yes, it does.
All right, so, um, the hour is getting late. So staff recommends approval of the resolution, um, to accept a proposal for professional service for the twenty eighteen MSAS traffic counting.
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Mr. Trumplin. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So administrative reports, city administrator?
Uh, yes, uh, mayor and council, I've got just a couple of items. A couple of weeks ago, it seems like it's been three months since we asked, last had a council meeting, especially about the length of our, um, meeting tonight. But nonetheless, we had the week of the sixteenth through the twentieth. Um, we hosted Mr. Chomperlin for a series of orientation sessions. So he was able to, uh, meet with us, uh, in groups, uh, based on department and we tried our best to kind of give him an idea of what we're up to here. So I thought those went really well. Um, and then last week I was out of the office on May two, three, and four at the MCMA educational conference up at Rambeau Lodge in Nissoa. And it was a very good conference, the speakers for the most part, I'd say, I think we had four big sessions um, throughout the couple of days that we were there, three days that we were there. And I'd say all but one of them was really good presentations, so. And even that, there was some good stuff in it, it's just more of the speaker quality versus the information quality. So it was a very good conference. And with that, Paul, just turn over to Ms. Tiber, I think she's got at least one item.
Yeah, I just have one item. So I just wanted to give you an update. We had posted, if you recall, for a building inspector position with Chad Bartley, um, leaving. Uh, that officially closed the end of last week. Um, but we opted to continue to post that as open until filled. We do have four interviews scheduled for later next week with four candidates. Um, but we only received four applicants for that. So we're interviewing, leaving it open at the same time, but I just wanted to give you an update as to where we were in the process.
And, and Jack is here filling in.
He was. He helped us out a few weeks, um, and he's off for a couple of weeks now again. Um, he may have some availability, uh, at the beginning of June, but so right now, um, we've got Jack right now. He did help out for.
How are we covering them then?
And we do still have a, an active seasonal position posted as well. We haven't had inquiries, we actually had a dual inquiry. He's opting to interview for the full-time position and, and I think that makes the most sense just from a clarity standpoint, uh, but it does sound as if we have someone who might be applying here shortly.
Okay.
So we're just going to continue to watch that as well. And that too is open until posted, both of them, the league as well.
Right, okay.
So, how are we doing inspections right now?
Jesse's doing it.
Jesse's, yeah.
Yep, he's busy, we're busy, very busy. Yeah, he's, uh, got a lot of, we're at about thirty permits already this year. Um, and there's probably ten to fourteen in for review, so it's just, yep, trying to throw them.
When you see Jesse, he's moving pretty fast.
Cause he has to do the reviews and the inspections and we can't tap into Victoria if need be?
No, we handled that earlier.
All right, well, let's cross our fingers. All right. Okay, any other staff reports? All right, so we'll move on to council reports. Uh, we'll start with, um, we'll start at that end, Mr. Trumplin. Anything?
Not, not yet. We'll have Pioneer Sarah Creek coming up.
Yeah, and did you notice that there's a new look, it's at the Independent City Hall?
Yes.
Okay.
I had been there once before.
Okay, all right, well, good, thank you, and thank you for doing that. All right, um.
And speaking of Pioneer Sarah, um, we have a CIP project that I think is going to be looking at twenty twenty. It was the South Whale Tail project and the price for alum treatment has gone up like fifty percent. Um, and that cost of that CIP project has gone from, I think it was two hundred thousand, it's gone up to over three hundred thousand. So I've updated John on, he's going to have to meet Brian at Three Rivers and talk about clean water fund grants and how to do that, if we're going to do that. Um, so that's, that'll get handed off to John. Also, we had a Mount Fire meeting, um, and if you read The Laker, you know what happened with, um, Minnetonka Beach and I won't belabor it, but, um, it's all there.
Okay.
Um, LMCD, um, trying to think of updates from last time. Uh, I will be here on Tristan Day to represent them as well, so we're in dual hat. Um, and, uh, just had some comments from, uh, public comment that I thought was kind of interesting. Uh, one of the Rana owners, you probably know him, Gabriel Jabor, um, mentioned that there are a new prob, one of the issue, relatively new issues showing up is that some of the very large boats are not locking as they're required to do so. Their bypass valve for sewage discharge. Um, and that was brought to our attention. So you can just imagine what that may cause.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh.
Yeah. Yeah, so. So, um, that was simply a comment at this point. We'll see if, if any action takes place on that. Um, and, uh, I think there was some discussion also about what the sheriff's department is doing for funding outside of what LMCD has provided for their funding as well. Um, but the demand on their resources is obviously going up. So that means that we may be getting fewer services, but I have not seen anything kind of creative that just yet.
Okay.
Um, let's see, I attended as a resident, uh, the planning commission meeting, um, and the public hearing for the short term rental, which was very beneficial. Um, on four twenty-five, I attended the personal committee and reviewed Mike Barone's review. And the WCC meeting on five-ten, I am not able to attend, but Mayor Willan will be filling in for me. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Um, so I too attended the Mount Fire meeting and a lot of it was discussing, um, uh, Minnetonka Beach's, uh, departure. So, um, again, I won't go into a lot of details on that. Um, also attended the Lake Minnetonka mayor's meeting. Um, there were quite a few, uh, there's fourteen cities surrounding Lake Minnetonka and, and I would say there were probably, oh, at least ten if not, um, more. And then mayors there and then also the, um, sheriff's water patrol, uh, not the sheriff's water patrol, but the sheriff's, um, deputy was there, um, chief deputy, whatever, second in command storms. Um, and then also, um, from Hennebun County, the prosecutor, attorney. So, um, those are all the meetings I was at. I, I'm gonna, I want to talk about one thing briefly. I don't want to take up a lot of time, the hour is getting late, but, um, it was brought to my. brought to my attention that, that Ms. Bruce has her own blog, which obviously we all know. But it was brought to my attention that she blogged regarding the recent snowplowing event. And it was very alarming to me because it was very negative and it was not, and when I read this, I'm like, well, you know, this is negative. This doesn't do anybody any good. And it just, it's not good for morale. And the thing that, the issue that I have is that I know that our Public Works guys, they went out, this was when we had that twenty inches or more of snow. And our Public Works guys were out there. And I asked, when I received the information that they were stopping the plowing, I talked to Mike and I found out what actually was going on, who made the decision, why was it made. And it, you know, it just didn't make a lot of sense to me that somebody on the council is, you know, dissing our Public Works and after this event. And I'm talking and I've got the floor, so I'm going to finish.
You said I was doing something that I wasn't doing.
And I'm gonna read it if.
I actually said the Public Works Department did a great job.
I'm talking. I've got it.
So please tell the truth.
This is what it says. Excuse me? Minatrista pulls plows from roads because of snow. Really? Dear Minatrista, there are good reasons to pull plows off the road, allowing for rush hour traffic, accident, inaccessibility, et cetera. But heavy snow is not, in capital letters, one of them. I was out in my Ford Expedition Saturday afternoon, driving through need-to-waste high drifts easily in four-wheel drive. The reason we have city plows is so everyone can be safe and have access to emergency services needed. What's next? Pulling our police officers off their routes because there are too many criminals? This is, this is, we, we, as public officials, elected officials, we have to be careful on how we state things and what we say because what we say and how we say them has a big impact, not only on, on us or as council members, but on our staff who's doing this and, and who's doing a fantastic job. I asked Mike to put together, or to, please, can you maybe inform the council or maybe Gary, the two of you briefly, what they did on that day? How many hours had they plowed? How many hours did they take off and take a break? And then when they came back? I mean, can you, and then also maybe, who made the decision and how did you come about that?
Mayor, Council, I asked Gary to, shortly after the blog post appeared, to try to put together some information on it because we had talked on Saturday night. He gave me a call at home. I was in my nice, warm, comfy home and he was out doing, he and his guys are out plowing. And I said, just let me know the hours that you worked over this weekend and some of the circumstances around it. Because when he called me, he said those guys have been working some long hours and it was really bad. The visibility was quite bad. The state plows were a little further west than here being pulled off the road, but a number of neighboring cities were pulling plows off the roads. I kind of felt like the, the information that he was giving me, we kind of factored all of, all of the things in, you know, how much have you done? When are you gonna be able to get back? How tired are your guys? That kind of thing. So he said that on Saturday, they started at two in the morning and they worked till eleven in the morning, so that's nine hours. Then they took a four-hour break and then they started up again at three PM and worked till eleven PM. So that's a seventeen-hour day. And then that's the evening when we posted that the plows are gonna be done and off the, off the, off the routes for a while. And so they came back on Sunday at four in the morning, so that's five hours they were off the road. And they worked till six PM, which is fourteen hours. So that's a seventeen and a fourteen-hour day. He had guys, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but he had guys generally will get snow starts in mid-April. He had three guys that were on vacation. We can allow under our union contract to have three guys off at a time. And there were three guys that took advantage of that, not knowing what the weather was gonna be. Two of those three guys came back early from their vacations, wherever they were at, to come back and plow. We had a couple of guys that are relatively new, don't have a lot of snowplowing experience. We saw one tonight. He's been here about a month and he was on the truck. And he's generally would have been assigned a pickup truck to plow a lot of cul-de-sacs, but he was on one of the big routes. So I think these guys did a tremendous job. And it was frankly disheartening to see and read about that. Cause I, I, you know, we didn't take this decision lightly and I kind of felt like it would be worthwhile for the public to know that they are gonna be off the road in case we, somebody wanted to call and complain about it because it was a safety issue. And we had a couple of plows slide off the roads themselves. These are great, big trucks are pretty heavy. They just slid into the ditch and had to pull each other out. And that's happened before to me, not just this particular, even with very experienced plow drivers. There's some fairly treacherous chunks of terrain here to negotiate, streets on hills.
So when, when I wrote that.
So I just wanted.
I, I read the blog post. I, I read the, the website post on the city that said the reason was different than what you just said. What you just said was you were short-staffed. You had guys that had been out too long and you had to pull them off. They had to get some sleep. You took them off the road for whatever reason. And if that had been the reason that you had put on the website, I would have understood that. The reason, and let me finish. I sat here patiently while you talked.
Except you interrupted.
If, if that had been the reason, I would have understood that. The reason on the website was you were pulling the plow drivers off the road because it was a blizzard.
Correct.
Correct.
And in retrospect, I think that wasn't a wise thing to tell the public.
I disagree because what you're trying to do.
If, and please let me finish. When, when you say that, that you're pulling them off because there's a blizzard, if, if people are out and their, their street isn't plowed, they're, they're gonna assume that they're out plowing other streets. They're, they're not gonna question why there isn't a plow on their street.
Well, we're not gonna sit here and debate what was said or why it was said.
Well, yes, we are. That's what you're doing.
No, no, we're not. I am, I am very upset that a city council member would, wouldn't pick up the phone and call Gary or call Mike and say, what's really going on? There's a blizzard, but yeah, shouldn't they be out? Rather than posting such negative things on, on your blog, you could have picked up the phone and asked.
And I also printed in the blog that I thought the Public Works Department did a good job following the reason. It's in there.
Boy, must have been some other time. So.
Mayor, Council, the reason, you know, I understand where Councilmember Bruce is coming from. But on, on purpose, I didn't print the reasons why we pulled them off the road. We just, the, the information I wrote that I asked Cassandra to post, that I talked about with Gary, was a group decision based on the safety of our guys and what was going on. I mean, they couldn't even see in front of their trucks very far because it was coming down so hot and heavy. And so after seventeen hours of plowing, I thought it was a damn good idea for them to take a break for a few hours and not continue to plow and get in an accident, et cetera.
And I don't, I.
This was what was posted. The city of Minatrista, snowplows will be pulled off the, off their plow routes at approximately six PM on Saturday, April fourteenth, until further notice, due to the ongoing severe blizzard conditions being experienced. This blizzard warning is being called a historic storm by the National Weather Service in Chanhassen with accumulating, blowing, and drifting snow fueled by gusts as high as thirty-five miles per hour causing white-out conditions. The NWS and MINDAT are advising no travel at this time. Minatrista Public Works will return to plowing once conditions improve so the plow drivers can safely conduct their routes, probably in the early AM hours on Sunday. Snowfall is expected to intensify through Saturday night and continue into Sunday with deteriorating visibility likely. Please be safe. That's what was posted. That's what people could have read if they went on the website. That, I think, is explanation enough. With that said, this ends this discussion. No, this ends this discussion. That's it. It really makes me upset. So we're not gonna discuss this anymore. So with that, we will go into closed session now for the review of Mike Barone. Okay. So we are back, we just closed our closed session and we are back in our regular meeting. And Cassandra, did you want to give us a synopsis of what we just talked about then?
Sure. So before us was Michael Barone's two-year performance evaluation.
One year, one year.
Annual.
Yeah.
One year. It's been a long. Annual, thank you. An annual performance evaluation with a recommendation rate increase, recommended rate increase of two-point-five percent, consistent with the all other non-union plays on our staff and his market peers. And the council approved that five oh.
Okay, thank you. So with that concludes our evening agenda. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion to adjourn and second it. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh.
John, I know this is somewhat of an anomaly. Normally, they don't last.